It is the time for us to go in and start our meeting. We are called to order. The first thing we're gonna do for our work session is break out into an executive meeting with our attorney. We need to get some updates on some issues that are going on, so at this time we'll stand in recess until we come back. And if somebody could feel Miss Kinser in there? No, correct. I want to thank everyone who's here for their patience. Obviously, we've had some issues that we need to discuss with the attorney, so appreciate your patience in that. I do have one or two members that are in the restroom, so we will begin just as soon as they return. Mr. Cobb, will you sing for us while we're waiting? Second thought, please don't. Thank you. We are gonna go back and bring ourselves back into session. Just want to point out, we do have our entire board except for two members, Mr. Dudley and Ms. Hopkins. Ms. Hopkins did let me know she would not be here tonight. Do we want to wait? I guess we should wait for Mr. Hickman, but if anybody could get started. Mr. Gaines, if you want to get started, just giving us some introduction on the instruction budget, I'd appreciate that. At least we can get things rolling until he gets here.
Okay. Good evening. Just wanted to give a few points, just as we talk about the instruction budget. As you know, just want to give a few key points. One is that we did not project any enrollment increase. And you know, normally we project up some, but due to students not returning to school, enrollment for next year is relatively flat, so you've got that factor going on in our projected enrollment. Also, as you know, we did a rezoning, so we've shifted students to different schools, so there's going to be some shifting of teachers. There's going to be that. And when you look at retirements, resignations, those things like that, you know, there's going to be a period where we'll have to look at certifications of people that left, what vacancies we have, and try to place what teachers we have before we, you know, if we determine that we do have any vacancies that will be posted for hire. Of course, that's gonna cause some shifting of teachers. We want you to, we did put some documentation about the right sizing proposal. I went back and looked at the board work session. I think the board approved option two. It was for grades five through 12. Tried to do a comparison, looking at our projected enrollment, and what would the teacher ratio be? What would that produce in terms of number of teachers that would be the teacher assignment for that school? Also then, you know, in the past, we worked off the BEP formula. You had that also in your documents, where we made, we calculated numbers of teachers based on projected BEP, the BEP ratios, the EIA. So with that in mind, that's how we determined some of those documents of school profiles, and that's where we develop our budget. Some of the things you're gonna see in terms of the instruction budget, you'll see in 71-100, 116, there is a projected increase of five teachers. EL teachers are funded in 71-100, 116. Currently, we don't meet the ratio of teacher to student for EL, and we need five teachers to make that work. So you'll see that increase is what we are projecting in 71-100, 116. I don't know, Chairman, I just want to give those guidelines. I don't know how you want to go. You want me to just highlight each line that we have asked for an increase, or ask any questions about the documents?
I can ask questions.
Yeah, Miss Kinser, if you'll ask your question, please.
There's extra teaching positions in this budget, correct?
Right. We're asking, yeah, we projected five more teachers in the budget. And there are also, right now, it appears that there are some extra teaching positions in the budget.
We have lost 300 students.
Yes.
Isn't there ESER funds that we could use, maybe not hiring these positions, but if these students come back, we can use some of those funds for that, not budget that?
Yeah, I mean, I guess we are still awaiting more guidance on ESER 3.0 from the Department of Education. We think perhaps that we can set some funds aside for additional teachers. I know some of the ideas that have been presented in some sessions with the superintendent are things like grow your own, or those things like that, which would infer that we probably could set aside some money for positions. Certainly, you know, we know we need interventionists. We know that's been approved in 2.0.
Wasn't that part of the ESER, that the RTI, the RTI specialist, all of that would be paid? Do we have to budget that money? I mean, is it considered income, what's coming in for ESER?
It would be in ESER, so it wouldn't necessarily be in our budget. It would be in the...
It would be separate accounts and everything? So when we see those positions in this budget, they're being paid by the ESER funds, not by our budget?
No, right now, they're being projected to be paid by the GP budget. When you see the increase in the general purpose budget, right now, we're asking to fund those EL teachers, for example, we're asking to fund those in the GP budget.
I'm talking about the RTI specialist, all of that?
No, no RTI, no interventionist, or extra educational assistance, they aren't in the budget, no. They're projected to be in ESER.
Okay. I know I have more questions, but I think it would be beneficial if you went down each one, and then if there are comments or questions, it might be. I'll turn my light off.
Mr. Lindsey?
Well, since we're at the first line, $2.1 million increase, and you just said there's only five additional teachers. We're going from 31-870 to 33-991.
There's also the step increase that goes along with, I'm sorry.
That's about a million dollars.
Right.
So five teachers is $300,000, so we're still, there's still $700,000.
Mr. LaConan?
71-100. So specifically in that 116 line item, you also have step raises included in there. And you also have any current vacancies that are open. There are additional teachers spread out in different line items. This particular line item, we have new positions. How many do you have under? We do have five under 116, but there are other teachers in other line items. But there's also a payroll analysis on your school board agenda meeting that shows us being behind in paying for our payroll. And I've notified you all in previous meetings that I expect us to be underfunded for payroll. We have the revenue. We've exceeded our revenue budget, and we can do a budget amendment and cover that. I expect us to be at a small deficit or a small surplus this fiscal year, within a few hundred thousand dollars. But, you know, with 1920, in 2021's budgets, 1920 had a 1% pay increase that we reduced that 116 line item to cover, and that was with attrition. So if that attrition occurs, then we're okay. The following year, with coronavirus, we passed basically the same budget, but our salary line, we decreased once again for covering for textbooks and also budgeting for attrition, again, because it's the same budget. And so those positions at the previous school board meeting as well, there were positions that were cut to try to make that happen, but not enough. So this is basically your budget with a step raise, and also the new positions that have been asked for in it, and that's just to cover the cost of it. And that's really the largest cost in this budget, is catching up payroll. The last thing is medical insurance. This fiscal year, we were due a 2% raise. Well, our enrollment happens in October, and we don't start paying that until January. So it's really, it's a 2% increase for the whole year, but since it's only a half a year, we get 1%. Well, now we've got to pay the whole 2% for the next year, and we've heard rumblings that it may go up again. But that's really your increase in payroll costs. That, we do have vacancies and new positions budgeted for, and that's on the payroll analysis sheet on your agenda. Hope that helps.
You mentioned vacancies, and I'm gonna put you on the spot. You know how many vacancies actually come out of 71-100, 116?
Hold on. You can just highlight, and it'll tell you in the bottom. Okay. Seventeen vacancies in just the 71-100, 116 line item at various schools.
So roughly, a little over a million dollars worth.
These would be, we can, if we include benefit costs, 1.1 million, if we include all the corresponding benefits with those estimated salaries for, if they were to fill the vacancy. And I was gonna say something else, but I forgot. Oh, yeah, these are as of basically two weeks ago, when we sent out and looked at the current, at the vacancies, so.
And we educated kids this year with those 17 vacancies.
It's gone up and down, but I mean, as far as I know, school's in session.
Okay, I don't see any lights on, so let's keep rolling through.
Let's move on down, Doug. If we, you switch by.
Are we moving from teachers?
Are we leaving teachers, or?
No, we're just moving down in 71-100. Do you have more questions about the 71-100 line?
Well, I mean, I have questions about the teacher numbers that you guys gave us, so I mean, I don't know when the best time is to...
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Okay, I'm trying to compare what you guys gave us on this document, and then what you gave us on this document.
Okay.
Okay. So the first one I'm looking at, it says teacher adjustment on here is minus four for Baker. But when I look at it on this other sheet, 22 is the current teacher count, K4.
Right.
The teacher allocation for 2021, 2022 is 17. That's a difference of five.
Right, right.
So why the discrepancy?
Well, if you had to count, that particular, you have to count, I put the specialist back in, is what we did. We took them, we looked at the projected enrollment, calculated the number of teachers based on that projected enrollment. If you look at the bottom, that's what it turned out to be in K3 and 4, and then we added the specialist back, because we assumed that we weren't gonna move any specialists from the school.
But then your number at the bottom says 17 teachers.
Right. The 17 teachers is the actual classroom enrollment, so could...
Okay, I'm not, I'm not, can you pull that one up on the screen so we can all look at it? Because I just, I'm not sure if I read all this stuff wrong.
Go to the BEP analysis. No, yeah, yeah, that's the one.
Well, you want to look at that, and then you also want to look at the projected enrollments, the school profiles, each of the, the ones with the little logos on them.
Go back to the agenda, I guess. I mean, I guess you need to download it, Doug. It might, we might have to. Yes. The updated school profiles. So I tried to compare the current staff, that's the current actual classroom staff, because when we talk about having to shift teachers due to enrollment, we're gonna shift classroom teachers. You know, if we have a teacher for...
Well, I understand, you're losing about 60 students at Baker, though, so you're not, so you're shifting teachers from there, which is why you're reducing it, right?
Right, right, right.
So, but I guess I'm just trying to figure out, it says BEP classroom projected is 17 on the chart, and then it says BEP projected on the profile, it says 17.
Right.
And it says current teacher allocation is 22.
Right.
22 minus 17 is five, not four. So why is the teacher adjustment four?
The teacher adjustments, actually, that's what the number of teachers they would lose. I mean, you gotta assume that they're still keeping their, their five specialist.
I'm not talking about special ed.
Special, yes.
Specialist.
Art, music, technology, PE.
Okay.
Yes. Everybody, I did not put library and counselor on there, because everybody has a librarian and a counselor.
Okay.
When we started producing this, we had to look at, we strictly tried to give you guys a picture of the actual classroom BEP enrollment, not, Lisa added the special ed count, but we can't, that depends on what the particular options of special ed that they have. The only adjustments we can make to school teachers are the classroom teachers, unless you tell us to take away a music, or an art, or something, a program at a school.
No, but I'm just, I mean, because that 22, the specialists are included in the 22, right?
Right, right.
And so if you're, so you're taking away, you're just dropping it four, is what you're saying? I don't know, these documents just don't match up to me. I don't know what I'm missing.
So the, we had the total teachers funded in the classroom to begin with was 16. Then the total staff funded would have been the 16 plus the, let me look at the profile to make sure. I'm guessing that number, that number may be off, and then maybe, I think it's more correct on the profile. I'm sorry, I may have just, there may be just a missed number right there for that one.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I'm not picking, but I'm just trying to understand, like, which one is, you know, one teacher is, what, $60,000, so?
Right.
And let me just explain what I did with this profile. I just went through and just did numbers comparing what it says current teacher count is, and what it says projected count is, and figured out adding and subtracting, and I came up with minus three teachers across the district for all the schools in the profile.
Right.
So are we reducing three teachers, classroom teachers?
Well, I mean, I don't know really say for sure if we will. I mean, I think we still have to do out of zone, we still have to replace retirements. There may be places where if enrollment fits, you may be able to, you may, if the class average doesn't go over, we may not need an extra teacher. I mean, I don't, I don't know that until we...
Well, I know, but I'm saying just based off of these projections, I'm assuming that that's what y'all used to figure out that teacher line item, right? So what I'm saying, though, is if you take all of your profile, you're losing three classroom teachers across the board, and that doesn't even account for McDowell.
Why?
Because you've got 10 more going to Randolph Howe, you've got two more going to Highland, you've got all that, so... But what I'm saying is if you add up the numbers, how many teachers are we losing at McDowell? Plus additional three, can't you reduce that teacher line item number by that amount?
I mean, as I look at the vacancies that we have...
I'm not talking about vacancies, I'm talking about your projections.
I mean, we could, you know, theoretically, we could, we could say we're going to lose about 12 teachers, but I don't, I don't know that yet.
I'm not asking about attrition, because we're not talking about...
No, and I'm not saying attrition, I'm just looking at, looking at the pluses and minuses, looking at the, you know, we made some known adjustments, but looking at that, we're saying that there are 12 teachers out there that, you know, if we, if we left things as they were, we could reduce, we could, I mean, we could theoretically reduce the budget by 12 positions. But we're, I'm, that's something I'm not ready to recommend, because we haven't done the out of zone enrollment. Enrollment is flat. We don't know what the new teachers are going to be. You know, I think that's something that certainly we could look at, but I don't think I'm ready at this time to say we just reduce the budget by 12 teachers.
But Mr. Gaines, if we're down in our enrollment, right, this year? So when we did our budget last year, we were expecting to have 13,000 plus. We're not at 13,000 plus. So we don't need teachers for 13,000 plus if we don't have 13,000 plus.
Right, right. Well, I mean, I don't know that we, you said the projected enrollment was 13,000 last year?
I mean, I think we were, you said that we went with the budget, well, Mr. LaConan said we went with the budget before, and I want to say that our budget before was for about 13,000.
But they also, they did cut some teachers last year. Right.
True.
Right. And we, we just kept projected enrollment flat for this year, which it's, you know, right now, it's around 12,4.
Right.
Yeah. Not, and you can't count, I mean, I think sometimes when you see, when you see 13,000, you gotta think about your P3 and your P4. We're not, we don't count those in enrollment. Your three-year-olds and your four-year-olds. They, they count in our enrollment, but we don't count them in this classroom enrollment. Yeah, because we don't get BEP for them.
But do they go somewhere, I mean, they're somewhere in the budget?
Yeah, well, P3s are either being served through speech, so that we're getting speech funding. Your pre-K students are K, pre-K students, we're getting funded those through a grant. Those are, those are pre-K students. Yeah, state-funded grant, so.
Okay, well, I'll just say, when I went through this document, which was very helpful, I thought, when you go through it and you do classroom teachers, again, you're losing three teachers across the district, and we don't even have a profile on McDowell, so that's an additional, I would guess, similar size to Baker, 22 teachers.
There's actually 19 teachers there at McDowell.
So we're talking about 22 teachers right now. Then if you look at special ed, they're adding eight based off of these projections. And if you look at CTE, they're adding two. So I'm just wondering if those are the numbers that you guys were using, or are we going off something else?
Well, when we're thinking about the McDowell enrollment, you know, some of those teachers are gonna naturally shift with children, because we're at the...
I understand, but that's why, that's why you got 10 more at Randolph Howe.
Right, right, right.
So they shifted, but I'm saying even when you account for that, you're losing teachers at Baker, you're losing, I mean, you're losing teachers at Battle Creek, you're losing, I mean, you can go down the list.
Some of those teachers will shift to, yeah, some of those teachers could shift to Howe and cover those positions depending on certification. You're right.
Right.
Yes, some of those kids could match out, and then you still have those teachers there that were, that could possibly be projected to be a loss.
Well, and I'm not saying that those people that are at McDowell won't, I hope that they find employment in our district.
Yeah, we do too, and right now, we're not...
Well, what I'm saying, that's 19 classrooms that we don't have to staff anymore.
Right, right.
So those people go away too. I mean...
Well, it's, yeah, yes.
Not, not the individuals, but the salary goes away.
Well, I mean, those kids will go to other schools.
But they go into other classrooms that get us closer to our BEP number that we get paid for.
Possibly depends on how we, yes. Depends on how, when we end up doing the class averages after we, you know, complete the out of zone period, and we restaff schools, and look at those enrollments.
But just in general, what I'm asking is, you didn't use this document to develop your budget. You did this document because we asked for it, right?
Right, 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 right.
Thank you.
Let me jump in and ask a question real quick. Mr. LaConan, I see you have the, I'm assuming this is year-to-date, in the column right before the yellow starts on the expenditure budget. I can tell what I'm looking at. I guess I shouldn't, I think you can read my mind.
Yes, yes.
On the very first budget document, there.
Yeah, that is, that is our year, 2021, actual as of 2/28/21, so last, the end of last month.
Okay, are you able to go off of that and give us a projection for the rest of this year, so we have a complete estimate for the year?
I already have. Hold on. Yeah, I've got it.
So if we're looking at a flat enrollment, the number you're about to give me should be about this number, but with a 1% increase in whatever healthcare increase would be, in theory. I'm not...
In theory.
I'm not holding anybody anything, but I want to understand it. I'm not quite as smart as some of my other folks up here. I need some, break it down as simple as possible.
Yeah. I do have that. I'll go ahead and pull it up.
Okay. I know there have been several other lights on. Mr. Moore?
I'll just start this off, because y'all know where I'm coming from already. I'm very frustrated that, to me, this has been clear through all of us, that we have a personnel cost issue here. And what I'm hearing from you guys is you have zero interest in addressing that. That's what I'm hearing. I'm just being blunt, sorry. I see that our intention is to keep it where it is, or make it larger, regardless of the fact that we do not need as many teachers, based on everything I'm seeing in front of me, and you're saying it too. But yet we have no interest...
Keep in mind, we did projected enrollment, as soon as we moved those kids that were at McDowell to another school, and I just wanted to, those kids are moved.
And again, from the numbers, show a net loss of three teachers based on those moves, correct?
Right, right, right now, yes.
But yet we're adding positions.
Well, we're, we're adding, we're adding EL positions because...
Let me save it. I think we fundamentally disagree with where this is going.
I don't think so, and I think we have to look at...
And I think it's clear when you look at the other sheets, when we start talking about, I've got too much paper up here. Let me find one of the others. Sorry, there were a lot of packets in there. I mean, when you look at the entire amount, and I'm going just beyond the teachers, when you look at the entire amount of how much we are budgeting for personnel costs, there's nowhere else to make this happen. And I'll go back to what I talked about the other night, that fundamentally, I have an issue with the request of the 114 million, as I've already said, I made that clear before. And I'm not anywhere near that. So I'm just hearing that you guys have no interest in addressing what the real issue is here. We're dancing around it.
Well, I didn't mean, you have to understand, an EL teacher is a teacher that serves kids beyond the classroom teacher. That kid is also counted in the classroom.
I'm not, I'm not talking about specifics of EL teachers.
Well, and I'm just trying to say, those additions that you're saying, those five teachers are serving those EL kids. They have nothing to do with class size ratio. They have nothing to do with the ratio of English language learners to teachers. So we have to, you know, we're out of compliance, so that's why we're saying we need to add those EL teachers in order to meet compliance. The same thing with career and technical education, right now, we're out of compliance. Now, will they, might they come out with some guidance in the summer that says, this year, they kind of didn't really put us to the task and say we needed to meet the average and hire more CTE teachers because of COVID and kids were remote, but we haven't heard any guidance to that effect to say that, you know, when school starts, or after 20 days, we should be meeting the class requirement and... we should be meeting the class requirement, and right now, looking at enrollment in CTE, we need those five teachers in order to.
And what I'm hearing you say is that we don't have a personnel problem, we're understaffed.
In, in those two areas.
There's just a dis, there's just complete dis.
Yes, yes, in those two areas. That's, that's what we're saying.
Yeah, so, uh, projection-wise, this is our projected revenue total, this is our prevent, projected expenditure total, and, and this is where we're expected to end up if we spend every single cent of supply, service, and capital money. Yeah.
Specifically looking for the teacher line item.
Oh, yeah, I got that too, yeah, hold on.
Sorry, I didn't make that more clear.
It's okay. Uh, and the biggest, uh, amounts are staff and, um, medical insurance. Uh, so with, with that, you know, on, on the projection for teachers, you know, one million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, uh, this is our projected amount rate here, thirty-three, one ninety-five, and if you look at the same staffing level, we're at thirty-three million, nine ninety-one, and that's with five new teachers in there. So, so that, and, and a step raise, so it's, it's not astronomical, we are projected to spend close to what we do have budgeted in that one-sixteen line item.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Lindsey?
So let's go back to what Ms. Parker said, wh- what she was talking about, and, and she's using the documentation we were provided. So, um, when we look at teacher allocation, uh, from the document, uh, that had, I forget what it was named now, but, but, yeah, the projected enrollment, so it showed a reduction of three teachers, excluding McDowell, which had nineteen positions. So now, we're at twenty-two positions. Because you allocated, we, in that, in that document we were provided, every student was already allocated, even those that are currently at McDowell. They got reallocated to these other schools, teachers got reallocated, so we're still at a reduction of three. Plus nineteen at McDowell, so we're at twenty, uh, a reduction of twenty-two positions, okay? And then we have seventeen vacancies. So, now, now we're up to thirty-nine positions. Uh, I hope everybody's following me, and I'm not speaking Greek here. So, twenty-two positions, I'm just gonna do some quick math, we're talking about one point four, one point five million dollars. And again, u- using, we're using the information we were provided, so, so that, uh, Ms. Parker didn't come up with that, so.
The current vacancies are positions that we, you know, that we're gonna try to fill, I mean, they're just not, they're just not, we're not able to fill it, they're not a, a practice.
I'm not talking about twenty-two, I'm not even talking about vacancies yet, we're, we're getting there.
Yes, yes.
So, so we're, I'm talking about the, the, the reduction of three in, in, uh, in, in the allocation, that document that's on the screen now. That when you, when Ms. Parker added all those up, we reduced by three. And, and then she, she made the statement that McDowell's not even included in there. So we, we've reallocated all the students, we've reallocated the number of positions we need, so we're gonna lose nineteen positions from McDowell, we're gonna lose three positions with the reallocation, so we're at twenty-two positions now. So, to me, that's a starting point, and then we throw in another seventeen for vacancies. I get that, um, that, that we want to try to fill those positions, but where we are is, we, we, as David said, we, we have too many employees. We have more employees than we can fund. Uh, and we haven't even started talking about raises yet, but the, but the problem is, we're trying to take care of too many people. And to take, we need to take care of what we have now, especially before we start adding positions. Now, I'm saying all this, and I don't want people to start freaking out, I'm not talking about we're gonna writing a bunch of pink slips. We're obviously gonna have a number of retirements, we're obviously gonna have a number of resignations, that we can backfill those positions with the nineteen positions, the nineteen people at McDowell, um, but we just don't have to refill those positions. So we, we could cut twenty-two positions using you guys' number and never affect a human being at all. All it affects is our budget. Yeah, and still pay for step raises. One point three-two million dollars. You agree with that, Doug? The number? Not the philosophy, the number. Thank you.
Yeah, well, we correlate, uh, you know, I think if you look at that bottom-line number, it's twelve positions that are, uh, leftover after, even including the McDowell teachers. On the BEP analysis sheet, if you look at the totals, it includes the, you know, I, we calculated the, uh.
I mean, you're relying upon my, like, numbers that are on here, and then I'm relying upon your numbers?
Right, right.
Like, can we just have, like, an agreement where we all come to an agreement on what you gave us? And whether or not my math is correct? Or your math is correct?
Well, it doesn't, yeah, I'm trying to see which one that. Yeah, that's, go to the, the front page, I think it's.
Because I didn't use that one, I used the other one, and we just talked about the first line wasn't.
Yeah, it looks like it got off, though, yeah. Yeah, it looks like when it uploaded, it came, the, the calculation that I, I have, that it shows that we would be, after, including the, the McDowell teachers, uh, if we're just talking about classroom teachers, we would have twelve, we got twelve, we're down twelve teachers that we could access right now. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that's taking into account the ones that go to other schools to fill the raise in, admit, uh, attendance?
Mm-hmm, now, we kept library guidance, we kept library, uh, guidance at schools, because we didn't, except for the McDowell. Right, right, right. And we already knew, we already knew in some cases about some positions, but that, that actual is what that is. Yeah, yeah. So, twelve positions is what we would, we are, uh, that are actually, we're down. And then, like you said, there are vacancies that exist right now. And there are also projected retirements, resignations, those things like that.
Mr. Lindsey?
But that's not what, is that, and, and I'm trying to understand it, it doesn't appear that's what the budget proposal suggests. It, it shows adding five ELL teachers in addition to what we have today, but that document shows we should be reducing our number of teachers by twelve.
Right, and, and what I said was, what I said was, with vacancies, uh, uh, and with vacancies and retirements and those things, I, we didn't reduce that, because I think we will, those teachers, now, we may reduce it after that, after we place those retirements, those, uh, uh, those vacancies after we replace those, I think, you know, maybe there'll be some, some, some positions that we could reduce the budget then. I mean, if we want to say, take those twelve, and if we could put them in to the budget, but, you know, some of those retirements aren't elementary students, aren't elementary teachers. And some of those retirements haven't fallen out of the budget, haven't fallen out of the staff yet, because they haven't retired.
But where we are in the budgeting process, I mean, the budget that's proposed, and Doug, you can correct me, we're somewhere in the, if, if we were to approve this number today, which, and I have no plan of doing that, I'll make that very clear before I say this. But if we were to approve that, we would be asking the county commission for somewhere in the neighborhood of a thirty-cent tax increase. Is that right, Doug?
So I'll just take a base seven million dollars and divide it by our current penny rate. It would be twenty-eight cents.
Yeah, so, so that's where I am tonight, with, uh, no way am I asking for a twenty-eight cent tax increase. Uh, I'm not. So, we, the way I see it, we gotta go to work now. We gotta get that, that seven million dollars reduced to a manageable number, and as David said, we have ninety-two or three million dollars of our budget is in, are, is in people, so the only place we have to make any significant change, reduction, is in people. So, uh, the way I see it, we've got to go to work on reducing our number of staff positions.
If I could speak just for a minute, you know, uh, I do want to go ahead and talk first about the the allocation sheet that we were first talking about. When we did that, we ran that with, um, in mind already, we're moving this many students over to Mc, from McDowell, and then we re-projected teachers, so you could see that some schools went up, and some others went down. Um, we do have a, some extra, we do have additional excess, what we'd call teaching positions, and, um, you know, I'm hearing what you're saying, so we can go back and look at that. You know, my fear is, our projection is just that, and nobody knows. Nobody on this board can know what's gonna, what, what it's gonna look like when we get to, you know, November. Is it gonna boom back up, and we're gonna be over that? You know, I, I do feel, you know, in some sense, that maybe not twelve is the number, but do we need to hold on to some positions for that growth number? Because, um, once again, when we look at that, that stuff we, if it's not in the budget, we have to budget for, and, um, we do get the growth from the BEP, but it's not into February, and then we're still, I believe it's two percent, Doug, is that correct? That we still have to manage on our funds?
Yeah.
So, we can reduce that number all the way down and just take our chances, like I said, and when we talk November or such.
I, I, I just don't think we're, we're getting to the same page yet. I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, and I understand where your position is, and I will be also very clear, I, I don't get joy from talking about this, although most people think I do. I, I do not. I can just look at numbers. And, and there's just no way around this, and I know that it's a very sensitive subject, it's a very difficult, emotional subject to talk about, the fact that we, we just have a personnel cost problem. Uh, that's not, I mean, it's a personnel problem, but it's a personnel cost problem. And I can honestly tell by your answers that you guys, A, haven't looked at it for this year, you're not looking to address it from that direction, and B, for six years being on this board, we've never looked at it from that direction. It has been getting worse and worse, year and year, and, and I've, honestly, I'm embarrassed that I haven't looked at it this way before now, and I should have been years ago. But at some point, that is the only place, I've watched us go through this, and we talked about this the other night, we try to squeeze two hundred thousand dollars here, we try to squeeze something out of textbooks, and look where it's gotten us. We have suffered horribly from that, all because we still won't look at the personnel cost problem. And frankly, I know, i- it bothersome to me, because I've used this analogy before, the pie is only so big. I mean, frankly, what we're asking for is to make the pie bigger, which, I, it blows my mind, but, um, the pie is only so big, and the reason we can't give each person a bigger slice is we have too many slices. And I, I want to respect the staff we have, and I want to, to, you know, compensate them well for doing a good job, but until we fix that problem, no one's ever gonna get there. We're just gonna keep divvying it up further and further. And what I hear right now is that we're talking about adding five more positions, smaller slices yet still. And then the teachers are left wondering, well, why can't I get a raise? I'll be honest, this is why. This is part of the reason we haven't, we have to struggle up here doing this. And again, I'm, I'm frustrated that I don't feel like you guys clearly don't want to make this step, I get that. But I think it's becoming pretty clear that, that the board seems to be saying that we're gonna have to, because there's just nowhere else to make up seven million dollars. I mean, we could cut out all of the facility stuff, I guess, like all of it, just get rid of every bit of it, but I don't know if that gets there. I mean, at, at what point, I mean, I'm, I'm a little frustrated when you say that we could go back and look at this. I thought we made it clear at the last meeting that that was what we wanted, and what we got instead was you guys trying to defend the same thing we already, you already brought us last time. And it's a little frustrating on my point, because that's, I thought it was very clear that we had a, that we should be going a different direction, but we're doing the same thing, and now you're telling me, well, we can do that, uh, but we gotta go back and look at it again. I, I don't know what to do with that.
Are you asking to cut beyond those twelve positions? Is that what I'm hearing?
I think yes.
And, and this is what I've gotta say, and I'd be remiss if I didn't, because we have to be very careful. Yeah, it sounds easy to just go ahead and cut, but we'll be, you know, like right now, I'll give, I'll use ELL, it's the perfect one to use. We're out of compliance, I mean.
Okay.
We are out of compliance, and then when we look at each classroom, we will, we have to make sure that we are in compliance. There are certain, and you know this, there's a, the BEP formula, we have to fall in with that measure. The, uh, for CTE, for classroom teachers, then, you know, we have these federal obligations.
Mr. Lindsey, if I could stop you on that, I appreciate that, I do. But if we want to go that direction, I will push back the other direction. If you want to look at what the calculated BEP formulas are for teacher ratios, do we want to go all the way to that?
And that's what we use.
No, we're not, we're nowhere near that. No, because they calculate it at the max capacity for each classroom, is the way they run the funding.
And, but they, they calculate, they don't calculate per school, they calculate as, we are one big school, one.
When you look at the effective ratios, that's what it works out to be, and we're still way below that. Now, again, as a community, I understand that we make that choice, right? We make the choice where we want our ratios of our classrooms to be.
I disagree with you. We, we, when the BEP formula, what it does is, how it is funded is, they just say, we've got so many kids in K-two, three.
Mr. Lindsey, though, we are funding three hundred-something more teachers than the BEP funding for, funds.
And the state is ten thousand over what the BEP funds, because it does not fund every position that when we have to run a school, that the BEP says, we have to have that ratio, we cannot go over that ratio.
And you're saying we're at the ratio in all classrooms?
In what he, what he is showing you, he's showing in the, what's the name of this report? The, uh, the report where it took the analysis of each school, the BEP analysis, that's what it was. It's showing you, we have to take each grade level, or grade band, like K-three, and say, how many teachers do we, how many kids do we have in there? Divide that by the, uh, the number of BEP allocate, allocations, which is twenty, and then it gives you a number, and that's the number of teachers. Then on top of that, what we have to do is run each grade level, and if the grade level, the grade level can go up to ten percent, but the grade band cannot, it can, it, like, if it's K-three, we can go to twenty-point-four-nine. Once it hits that twenty-point-five by the BEP formulas, we have to put another teacher in that grade level. We have to, if the, or in that grade band. If a grade level, let's say kindergarten, if they go, they can go up to twenty, twenty-two-point-four-nine, but soon as they hit that twenty-two-point-five, we have to put another teacher in there by the BEP formulas. The way we are funded sincerely is they take every student we have in those grade bands and say, that's how many we're gonna fund you. They don't look at individual schools, it's, it's like, you get paid this formula, but we're holding you accountable for that formula. And, uh, it, it, it stinks, but that's why the state is over ten thousand. Let that sink in, ten thousand teachers over BEP funding because of this. That is one of the reasons we're crying out to legislatures. We need you to rework that formula, because there's forty-seven components to that BEP, uh, component. And that is one of the main reasons we're saying we've got to get something better in this BEP, the way we get funded, because they don't look at every school individually, however, they will look at us and say, we're funding you for this, but you're gonna have to get more teachers on your own dime, because you're out of compliance in your numbers. So, that's why I do, respectfully disagree with you, Mr. Moore.
So, I, I think, like a teacher, I'm sorry, and I've got to get in gear with the financial side. I appreciate numbers, I've also ran a business, I know about getting financial costs, but, I mean, I'm almost shaking right now, because what I hear, and what I've seen, and what I feel, is that every teacher we remove, we're forgetting that it's also impacting our students. And I listened to the last session, and I hear, what are y'all doing, what are y'all doing to make a difference? And where our difference comes is with our teachers. And I can tell you from being a classroom teacher, the more kids you have to serve, the harder it is. And I know we've got to get the numbers right, and I appreciate that, but do know, the more kids you put on a teacher, it, it does, it strains that, and that's such a, a big thing to remember. Another thing that's on my heart, and I just want to say it, um, I know we're having to look at funding, and this is a budget thing, but you know what, I've listened to different things, and I really feel for those McDowell teachers, and I don't, I think we need to get them placed, and place them as soon as possible. I would like to see that done, like, yesterday, I know that's not possible. But when you sit here and you say, oh, we're cutting this position, we're cutting that, I, I think, you know, what would I feel like if I heard? I, I think, you know, what would I feel like if I heard that sitting in their spot now? And I want us to be mindful that I know that we're not here to, you know, necessarily just keep people in, in employment. I'm not suggesting that. But I want to make sure that we're also not neglecting those people. Because that, they've already been through so much. And I want to keep them in mind. I'm sorry, I have so many thoughts, I'm trying to get them here. But I know there was something else. But can you tell me, I mean, I know what you're saying, like the right sizing numbers. I see that we're, oh, I know my point I was going to make. Here's my fear. There's a lot of people, because we're coming off of COVID, that went homeschool. They went alternate routes, because they were fearful of what might hold in the schools. This is just a thought, trying to help get a more accurate return for those numbers. I know we've never done it before, but would it be out of question to maybe do some kind of soft enrollment? Like where, like, I know that we do like kindergarten and things, like where people come in and say, hey, we're wanting to come back into the school system. Have we thought about anything like that for those that may be pulled away or went private? I mean, have we already done that? I'm just trying to think of ways to get our, our staffing numbers and our student population as accurate as we can. Because, and I know you're going to answer that, but I also want to say this. If we miss this, this is what happens, because it's, I've seen it happen. We're going to come in in August, and we're going to be, we're going to be searching for teachers. And you know who we're going to get come August? We're going to get the ones that every other district didn't want. And again, we said we want our school to be the best, and we want them to do this, we want them to do that. Well, you don't get that with getting bare bones. And I'm not saying anything, because I mean, some people may be hired in August, may be the best teacher ever. I'm not suggesting that. But normally, the best are hired first. And I want to make sure we're doing what we can to get the best without being, you know, splurging too.
And I want to be clear, you know, the McDowell teachers, we are, we, we met today to start where we're going to place, we actually have been meeting beforehand. But, you know, with the retirements, with, with just teachers leaving the district, hopefully, we'll be able to place enough just by doing that. And, you know, and kind of to speak on a little bit that you touched on, Ms. Urban, was, you know, I wish I could make our K3 numbers be a lot smaller, especially with all we hear about learning loss. I wish we could have a smaller ratio. But we know, the facts are, we've got a budget. And we've got to stay in that budget. And we've got to be careful how many we increase, you know. So, you know, we're looking at inventive ways, I guess is the best way to put it, to use our SRR 3.0. But I, I truly want you to see, when we show this profile of the school, that is in BEP compliance by their formula. And I believe we included, as part of our documents, was the BEP handbook that we have to use and adhere to. High school's a little different. High school, you have three kinds of teachers. You have a Gen Ed, you have a SPED, and then you have CTE. So its formulas are a little different. They're a little wonky on how we do that. But however, you know, when we go past this 12, and you say, I understand that, but we're going to have to lose 10 more. Do we want our ELL to be out of compliance by not having enough ELL? We'll have to answer to the state. Do we want this school to be out of compliance? Do we want our CTEs to be out of compliance? We have to follow the rules they give us. They're not fair rules, but they are the rules.
Ms. Parker.
Okay, one thing I want to be very clear about. When I gave you those numbers, I said that there was eight additional SPEDs. Okay? So when you start talking about ELL and stuff, I'm just talking about Gen Ed when it comes to those minus 3 and the minus 18 number that you gave me. So I'm not talking about SPED. I'm not talking about CTE. But you mentioned that BEP is, I mean, it's not a suggestion. Like, we have to have, we have to be in compliance. And so we've got to get there. But my question for you is, one of the documents that y'all gave us was, you know, each of the schools and, and, you know, their class sizes. So like, I just went through Whitthorne. At Whitthorne, there's at least five classes, and I'm not counting RTI, where they're over their BEP number. So we're out of compliance there. Why is that?
The state did not, this year, they usually, we usually run a second report, and they make us get back in compliance. Due to COVID, they just, you know, I think if they gave grace to some, usually, we would be, if we're out of compliance, we'd have to hire another teacher to get us in compliance.
Okay, so here's the thing, though. When we start talking about teachers and class sizes and, I mean, I'm looking at the numbers for Whitthorne. We're talking about a class with 31 kids in it. Now, I haven't looked at all the other middle schools, but I'm going to doubt that they have 30 kids in them. So why are the kids at Whitthorne having 30 kids and somebody else having 20 kids? And how is that fair to them? So that's where this whole discussion about teachers, this is, we, we have been very, very employee-focused when we've done the budget in the past. And I just want us to be student-focused. If we need the five ELL teachers to be in compliance, then we've got to include that in the budget. But my problem is, right now, what I'm seeing in the budget is not really what we've got to have. It's what we want to have. And there's a difference. I mean, the numbers, I mean, truth be told, if Baker only gets funded for 13 teachers from BEP, and they've got 22, then we need to have a conversation about what that looks like. Now, that would be a very, very tough thing to do. But we've got to be realistic about how we're spending our money. And one of the issues that I have right now, actually, is I'm looking at that payroll document that was on our attachments. Last year, we budgeted $88.5 million, and we spent $88.8 million. So I'm a little confused how we overspent. Well, we weren't even in session, essentially, for two months out of the school year. We paid people. So I know, Mr. Higman, you weren't here for that. But as a board member, I obviously approved a budget amendment, or our board approved a budget amendment that allowed for that payment to be made. But y'all's got a bigger problem. Because right now, the budget for this year is $88.1 million. And the projection is $90.6 million. I think I said this before, when we had a budget amendment. I'm not approving it. So I'm not going to approve that money. So how are you going to decide who does not get a check? Because that's essentially what you're, you're putting it back on us, where we've got to do that. And Doug, I know you're going to say that it's because of the, that you told us that we were short and all that kind of stuff. I get that. But I'm just saying that we've got to figure this part of it out. And that's why we're having trouble with this budget. It's because it doesn't, I mean, we're already at a situation where we can't even fund what we have this year. And we're getting more without cutting, when we cut a school?
Mr. LaConne.
I mean, cuts in attrition did not happen. You can't say you're going to do something with a budget, approve that budget, and not have that action happen. That's why we're here. That and the increase with medical costs. And, and the other side of that is simply, we also gave a step raise, you know, but we kept the same budget. The teacher line actually went down when we gave a step raise. A step raise is a million-dollar increase. So, you know, yes, we're projected for that. And the other side of it is, y'all can choose to, to not approve a budget amendment, but it will be guaranteed in audit funding. It, it will. And the budgets that came through here to fund those that were in attrition, the school board was in agreement with and approved it. And so I, I just find it, I, I understand that you guys make a decision on how much you're going to spend in a year. And that, that is the, the school board's authority. But, but at the same time, we either need to be able to be prepared to, to do that with a budget amendment against revenue rather than fund balance, or, or out of fund balance, either way, or find a way to find $2 million to cover the staffing.
Ms. Kinzer, did you have your light on?
Well, I'm, you know, I, I don't know. I'm, my heart is kind of bouncing around with all kinds of thoughts. So as soon as I get them off my, first of all, 114 million, 113 million is too much. Will not fly. So our work, your work, is to get us at a realistic funding. I mean, we've got, we're coming here, we're doing the same thing. This is my fifth budget, and it's the same conversation every year. The other thing that's the same is that the thing that keeps putting off is teacher raises. Okay, 1% last year, $200 a year, no cost of living. And I understand every time that this has happened. But we have also come at the end of June, and fund balance happens. And oh, my gosh, a lot of money goes into fund balance that has been saved or not spent, or however that is. To me, that is money that was spent on the backs of teachers that didn't get their raise, that didn't get what they earned, and didn't get what they deserved. Now, yes, I'd say we need to cut some teaching positions. We've got to. But we've also got to pay for them, because you're right. We're not going to be able to attract anybody. We've got the lowest beginning salary in middle-tier seats.
I'm proof of that. I'm sorry, Ms. Betty, I went to another school because I can make $5,000 more dollars.
That's right. And these are smaller counties with less ability to pay. Our county has a, a much wider ability to pay than what they're paying. That's just the way it is. We're, we've become a richer county. I'm just saying to you all that I'm just really tired of going through this. He's right, she's right, you're right. We're all right. But we, we can't send 140, so where is it going to be? Well, one of the places that I was a little concerned about, I saw your organizational chart. It looks good. And then I realized that each of those directors will get a $10,000 a year raise. And yet, we're saying we're going to cut teaching positions. We may not be able to afford a raise. That just doesn't make sense to me. So I, I don't even want to look at principal salaries, AP salaries, central office salaries. I think that we need a comprehensive plan of what our strategic plan going forward is. That we don't need every year to say, oh, gosh, what are we going to do? Let's see what's left over that we might be able to give our staff. And I don't mean just teachers. I mean staff. Our bus drivers are underpaid. Our teachers, oh, my gosh, the years they've had. And I know we gave them a bonus. What's the good of the SRR funds if they can't help us out some way? What is the good of that? But that's what's on my heart here, is listening to the same, I feel like it's Groundhog Day. You know? And that's where I am. I, I don't, these are brand-new board members that are going through budgets the first time. And you're probably going, you're flabbergasted. We've got to get at least $6 million off of that, at least. Where's it going to come from? Well, it should have been the mentality that everybody working on it was, to keep it in that boundary, so that we don't go through this every time. Okay, I pass.
I, I heard what you said. And were there increases figured in at the central office? Mr. LaConne, Mr. Higman, whoever wants to take that one?
I mean, in this current budget proposed to you, yes.
How much?
A couple positions. I, I don't have a specific amount for central office location. But I can pull out line items, and, and we can go through them.
There were new positions, too?
There were two, two new positions, yes.
Okay, I would be curious, you don't have to look it up right now. I'd be curious to know the number, the amount of increase with those two positions and without those two positions. Simply because if we can't get our teaching staff straightened out and taken care of, we don't need to be taking care of anybody else. I, I think the world of you, Mr. Higman. But that's just my take on it. I'm one of, and like everybody says, I'm one of 11 votes. Mr. Higman, I'll turn it over to you for a minute.
You know, I can't make it clear enough is, I keep hearing we added all these new positions. When we're looking in the teacher line, the only new positions that we added was those EL teachers. We didn't ask for additional teachers. Did we leave 12, the 12 in there? Basically, we took last year's and looked at where the, the step increase, plus the deficit from the budget that was voted on last year that happened, was in there. And it wasn't any new teaching positions put in there. You know, the other positions we talked about, central office, we added two. And, you know, I agree with you. We need to take care of the teachers. We've got to take care, and that's why I put the 3% in there. It just seems like it keeps coming back, like we're being told that we've put this big amount of new positions in there, and we didn't put any new. I think Doug explained it a little bit about when you look at the 116 line, what is so much bigger? And we just added those EL teachers in that number, and that was it. It, it's just the increase in it. You know, we'll pick through, we, the ones on the central office, we really feel like we need to have a commitment to RTI. So we feel like we needed that coordinator in, with the elementary as well. And. And we, we can SRR fund, but here, here's my problem with when we start SRR funding all these positions. You know, what are we going to do with them in two, three years when SRR is over? That's the problem I'm worried about, because this is not recurring funds. I'm worried in two or three years, we'll have great momentum going with these positions that we're adding, and then they won't get funded. So that's why they're in here now, is so we can make sure it's recurring funds.
I'm just going to, because like I said, I've got to have it broken down the simplest for me.
What I'm having trouble with is the fact that we've had the discussion that we potentially have 12 excess positions. And that was not taken out of the budget.
Am I off in my confusion here? Okay. That's, I just wanted to clarify that, so I knew what I was confused about. Ms. Parker.
I, I just got a real quick thing. Let me say, on the positions at central office, I wholeheartedly support the additions that you're talking about. However, what I have a problem with is, again, when we look at this payroll for this year, at least one of those positions got added. And it says down here on the bottom, formerly coordinator of dat and assessment. Well, dat and assessment, I thought we dropped back to, we didn't get that position filled. But we, we approved that position. We didn't approve a middle school coordinator. So I'm not saying that we don't need that position. But that's where, to me, when you look at, and going back to Doug, when you look at what we have budgeted and what we're spending, they're not, they're not lining up. And that's why when I say, I don't want teachers not to get paid, but it's real frustrating when, I don't hire people. I don't. I don't make promises to people. Y'all make promises to people. But y'all know what budget you have to work in, and y'all got to follow through on that. And you have to be transparent to us about that. This is transparent. What you did this year was not transparent. And that's where I've got problems with it, as far as, as far as that one position. But I think the positions are needed. And I think the position would have been given, and we could have moved stuff around. And, but it's just like, it's just like kids on stage or whatever. We were just like, we have the money in there. It's one big pile of money, and there's always a vacancy, and there's always somebody that we can hire. And then we get to the end, and then it's like, oh, man, we overspent. I mean, we're trying to, we're trying to hold people accountable to their budget. But if you guys are not following the budget that we set out, then that really makes what we're doing up here seem kind of futile. I mean, kind of a waste of our time. So I just hope that, you know, we can, we can develop a budget that actually fits the needs that we have in our district.
Okay, I'm going to turn it to Mr. Moore, and then I'd like to put a close on this part, because I think there's probably some work that needs to be brought back to. Okay, I'm, Moore in Hooper, go ahead.
Doug, I just want to revisit one thing, because I know this is fundamentally a difference. If you could go over this with me for a second. With the projected numbers we have here of the, the revenue of 107, I know in years past, since I've been on here, we always kind of rely on the, it'll, we, we go a little low on that. We get that money at the end, to Ms. Kinzer's point on that. But if we start moving this direction, which is where a little more aggressive revenue numbers on that, the expectation would be, moving forward, if we continue that trend, we won't see that big hit into fund balance at the end of the year. So I, I think that's an important thing for us to remember, that we, we got it, we got to pick one or the other. We, we can't bounce back and forth. Because if we go this direction, we're not going to have that big, big hit where we can just, hey, we can do something with it. Because we're really not. I mean, if you could kind of expand on that. It's an important thing, because it really, we have to pick one of those paths and go down that. We can't change midstream, because it won't be there if we go this way.
I agree. And, and one part of that is, is there is a revenue really out of this board's control, and that's property tax. And, you know, we have budgeted 107.1 million, and we've increased our, our sales tax budget 3 million, and our property tax 1.3 million.[1798.01] But the truth is, is if the commission wants to hold maintenance of effort, they can pull those pennies away, and we'll be at a hundred and three point nine million. And that's a huge hit, and that's something that, you know, we have to keep in the back of our heads. And hopefully, the commission will be tender with us on that. And I think that we have taken an aggressive approach. I feel like with sales tax in this budget compared to previous years, we budgeted sixteen point eight million, two years in a row. We blew it out of the water last year by one and a half million. That's great. You know, we've done well during a COVID year as well. Those are good things. And yes, we can make moves with it. Honestly, it's going to be what helps us make sure everybody gets paid through the end of July, you know, so that we can do those budget amendments. But yes, you know, as far as, I've let you all in pretty much on my strategy of why I budgeted this year's particular revenue. And I'm open to, you know, opinions and changes in that, but it has been increased three million.
And I do appreciate that. Mr. Chairman, I guess, here's where I'm at right now. We're two hours into this. And frankly, I don't think we're getting anywhere tonight. I think we are far too far apart from where, what they've brought to us. So I don't know what you plan to do with that, but I'm just not sure, us spending another hour going in circles here is going to be very productive.
Mr. Hooper?
Just, I guess it's clarifying, because I think it's been stated and restated a couple of times. So that this budget now that we have for the teachers, right, is based off of last year's that was run out of deficit, adding five, but also reserving twelve spots, right? So, and I guess what we're asking is, the twelve spots that are there, they're not technically needed right now, but you're holding out to see if we increase enrollment, correct? What number would you be comfortable with, I guess is what we're asking? Because twelve is a lot. I mean, even for growth in enrollment, that's a lot of teachers still. So at the very least, I think we can come off of twelve down to maybe five or wherever. I think that's what we're asking. I think that's a start. Twelve, even then, is an excess, but at the very least, I think you have to come off twelve is what we're all asking.
And I want to be clear, you know, I wanted to be very forthright, very transparent, show you exactly. Because at the end of the day, I'm with all of you. I don't want to sit in June and, all right, we've got to pay a one point five million dollar salary deficit because we didn't budget it. And that was the whole point of what we're trying to do, is being very transparent. And how many exact amount of teachers showing you where we are, how many where we're at excess? Because I wanted you to see exactly what it is, instead of just saying, hey, we need three new teachers. I wanted you to see exactly what we're dealing with. And, you know, that transparency, yeah, it's got me some pushback on those twelve, and I get it, I understand it. And we'll move forward, and we will go through this, and we'll make sure to, you know, look at other places where, see if ESER 3.0 can fund that. See if maybe some of the non-position places, because I want to make sure, you know, and I think the question you're going to say is, why didn't you do this in the first place? You know, when we were building this, we still didn't have what the expectation was going to be in ESER 3.0, and it still hasn't fully came out.
Mr. LaConan?
And part of the reason why, and I'm speculating, but we just reviewed the operations and capital budget that previous Sunday. So, you know, this was still the instruction request as presented for this particular meeting. And yes, I definitely think you could take some indication and inflection that a hundred and fourteen wasn't going to work in that meeting, because that number was presented. But this was the official meeting to review the instruction budget, and, you know, people here to present what is specifically in there, why it's needed. And I understand that the one fourteen number is a high number. But I think, you know, we all want the same thing, is a passable budget that provides the most need as possible that we can provide to the children. So, but that specifically, you all hadn't looked at the instruction budget proposal, and making any nods or, you know, moves on.
Well, and I will say, that Sunday afternoon, we spent a lot of time in contentious discussion around capital and around operations, same thing we're doing tonight. I felt like that Sunday was very productive in a first step. I feel like this is very productive in a first step. First step. We've got a long way to go. We are scheduled, I'm not breaking the meeting up, but I'm just looking at the calendar. We are scheduled for another budget meeting, the sixth of April, which is during spring break. I don't know if anybody's going anywhere or not. I've got nothing else to do.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't either. Would we be able to see a, trying to find my words, more... I was trying to think the right word. A different budget that we might continue to have further productive conversations on, that does take into consideration some of the things that have been brought up tonight. Take that back. All of the things that have been brought up here tonight. Would the sixth provide that time adequately? That's a week. And I think you know where we're going with it. We're going to have to get it down.
Yeah, I, just talking to Doug just now, I think we can do it. Just want to make sure, is everybody good with that before we move on?
Let me, I've got two lights on, Ms. Parker.
I just want to say, I know you mentioned like ESER funds for people, and why you wouldn't want to use that. And I wholeheartedly agree with you on that. But one thing I really want this budget to be is an operating budget. So like what we actually need it to be to move us forward. And so things like textbooks that are annual costs that we have, I do not want us to backtrack on that. Now, if we need ESER funds to go over and above what we're lacking in textbooks, because we've cut out half a million here, or we've cut out half a million there over time, I'm fine with that money going there, but I just don't want to see a step back on some of those things that we've been doing to try to move the ball forward, to try to make a personnel number work. Because at the end of the day, you're just delaying the inevitable of what you have to do. I mean, it doesn't do us any good to employ somebody that eventually we're going to have to get down to a different number on. So I just hope you take that into consideration.
Mr. Moore?
And if I could go, I would echo that too. That's where I'm looking at, is to make sure we are not using the, this one-time money, which is a considerable amount of money, let's be honest, to replace things that we should be doing a better job of. Because again, the disconnect I still have here is that I get the impression that staff feels like this is a funding problem, and it's not. It's a spending problem. And you can disagree with that all you want, I get that. But I think we're making it pretty clear that that's where it's going to have to go. And it actually frustrates me that you guys disagree with that, because it shows me that you guys just don't understand what the numbers are of how we have to operate. Because we came into this asking for, first of all, we did a seven, well, I'm sorry, a four and a half, five million dollar increase on the revenue side, right? And then another seven above that, as if we were underspending by seven million dollars. I just don't see how that's in any way possible. And I'll go back to the thing I said the other meeting. I don't even have an answer of how we're getting seven or 10 million dollars worth of better education out of any of this. There's just no answer to that. It's just, I guess, to get us caught up, to, I don't know. There's just no answers here for me. And to go back to what somebody else said about cutting twelve positions, there's still vacancies out there too, that I think should be on the table as well, on top of that. I think you guys are going to need to dig in and find every place you can on this. And I'm going to be, I'll just be honest, I'm going to be very frustrated, and that's an understatement, if you guys come back and start squeezing out things like two hundred thousand dollars for textbooks, or some kind of school bus tires again, like we've done in the past. You weren't here for that. Let them catch you up on how that goes. Because I'm just done with that entirely. The problem is on the personnel side. It's ninety million dollars of a hundred and four, five million dollar budget, what it was last year. That's where it is. Simple as that.
Okay, I think we have our work cut out for us going forward. Are we prepared to move on to the next item on our agenda? Let the record show, we spent an hour fifteen minutes talking about one line item out of the budget. Just kidding. All right, capital budget. Mr. Pearman?
I will be happy to pick up anywhere you want to. I know we spent a good bit of time last Sunday about this.
Were there any changes that you made?
We did not at this time, just because we talked about it, no direction was given to cut or to move anything around. So it is presented to you exactly like it was on that Sunday. I'm sorry for that. No feedback.
Ms. Irvin?
So, I have questions. I was here for the Saturday retreat work session that we had. And, I don't know, I just feel like a lot of, I mean, I know we talked about different options, but I thought they were just that. I thought they were options. And I thought they were options that we were going to come back together as a board, and we were going to talk about. And then, of course, I get it, and it's like we've already got this plan. And I've looked at a lot of things, and I know we need a high school, I know we need an elementary school. I've also looked at a lot of policies that say things like, you know, we're going to involve parents, staff, members of the community when we look for, getting plans for construction of a new school. So I have said, and people keep saying, trust me, trust me, but I'm new, and I want you guys to explain to me whatever you feel like you need to explain to me. But I am not in favor of a two thousand seat Battle Creek High School at all. And what I'm hearing from a lot of constituents across the county is this. And I know we've got, I know we've got sizing for schools that we've adopted, and I know things didn't get submitted to our board policy. But from what I'm seeing on board policy, I know Kristen questioned it that Sunday. I'm seeing discrepancies there. And this is what I want to say. I'm hearing from people, people don't want their kids driving down that, especially two thousand kids, going down to where Battle Creek is. I still do not understand why we cannot renovate Spring Hill High School, get it up to par, perhaps maybe build a more cost economic Battle Creek High School. I know we say like facilities and stuff and saving, and you know what comes to my mind about that? Is Battle Creek is a campus school, and if it is a campus school, and if we could build a 1,200-seat school, they could share. I mean, is there a reason why they cannot share this like athletic facilities? I know not a gym, but like outdoor facilities with Battle Creek Middle School? Because, so that's a savings there. And then this is what else I hear. I heard that, you know, we need an elementary school on the north side of town, which, I mean, I agree with, I totally agree with, and I want that. But it's like to put it all the way where Spring Hill Middle is, and then I heard, pretty sure I heard right, then, oh, then we can close two more Columbia schools. Well, I feel like that's just rubbing salt in the wound to Columbia. And maybe I'm like missing something, but that's what I heard. And another thing I will say with that is, when I first got into this seat, we had a work session on that very first Saturday, and someone at central office, I don't remember who, I think I do, but I'm not going to quote anybody, said, a mistake we have made in the past is we have looked for, we built schools on grounds that was either free or, you know, worked for us, and we don't need to do that again. We need to, instead of like working on what's free or what we've got, we need to make school growth in an area that's going to be beneficial for our district long term. And I don't see that it's in Spring Hill. I really don't. I think Columbia needs an elementary school. That's just my two cents worth. I personally think we can do a Columbia Elementary, make renovations, make Spring Hill High School, or whatever seat it is now, I'm going to misquote it, I know I will, but get it up to where it's not in the condition that it's in, where it's up to par, and build a smaller scale Battle Creek and share facilities. Because here's the thing too, I know Hewlett Spencer sat here on that Sunday, from what I heard, and they talked about Highway 31 being a nightmare. Well, you're going to have kids going across it. I just, I don't know. Everything I hear from parents is that, I've driven down it, it's a windy, narrow road. I can't imagine two thousand sixteen to eighteen-year-olds driving that road. So that's my spiel. I'm sorry to throw it out there like that, but that's my two cents worth.
Thank you very much. I have had several conversations in the last two weeks, obviously. My mic is on. Especially thanks to our friends at the Daily Herald for making my phone start ringing Sunday afternoon. I do think that there have been some questions about which direction to go with a high school. But I want to ask you this, Mr. Pearman. You guys have looked at the growth figures. I don't think it's any surprise in here that Spring Hill is probably going to add some houses in the next couple of years. Do you foresee a time, based off of your projections, when two high schools might be the need? Not simultaneously, but in phases?
I guess, to answer that question, I would ask your timeline on when you think that would be. I think ultimately internally, we have always seen the northern part of the county. And please remember that Spring Hill High School sits in the city of Columbia. I know no one in Columbia wants to hear that, but it sits in the city of Columbia. It does not sit in Spring Hill, it sits in Columbia. Spring Hill High School is a Columbia school, just as much as Randolph Howell is, when Randolph Howell has kids with a Lewisburg zip code going to school there. We have always internally thought that ultimately, there would be a high school on either side of 31. Now, long term, and if you want me to speak long term, we think that that would impact the rest of the northern part of the county. Is Spring Hill on the east side of 31 going to have to have a high school? Yes. Port Royal, Port 31, north of Saturn Parkway, Greens Mill Road, north of Bear Creek on that side, there has to at some point be a high school on that side. If I misread your direction, and I will say, based off of our lengthy conversation on Sunday, I don't know that we ultimately did. If you wish to stay at Spring Hill High School and build a new middle school, then the Santa Fe Gym and the remodeling of the school probably immediately fall off of that table. The updating of the stadium fall off of that table. We looked at two years ago a forty-three million dollar cost to renovate Spring Hill High School and to get it up to code. That did not, or up to carrying, I think at that time, eighteen hundred kids. That doesn't adjust the stadium. What we brought back to you in the plan that we did, ultimately gave you a new high school on the north side of town. It gave you an elementary school on the north side of town. It would provide for a new auxiliary gym at Santa Fe, and possibly remodel an elementary school, and we mentioned Mount Pleasant Elementary. When you throw the new stadium that would go in with the new high school, that is four of your six, five-year building projects right there. And if you remember, what we came to you and said is, if we have to find land, there's the big obstacle. Land pushes us back in time. We are a, you know this, we're a government entity. We don't get to go to Mr. Sims tomorrow and go, we'll give you this amount of money for your land. We have to do that in, almost in secret, and it's a process that takes up to sometimes six months to a year. And that land may not be available. And when you talk about the north side of this county, that land starts kind of going away very fast. Then you have to do soil studies, you have to do water studies, you have to engineer that property. So we know we built the Battle Creek Middle School building for twenty-one and a half million dollars. The estimation of buying land on the north side, doing that, could push that number as high as twenty-eight to thirty by the time you buy it, by the time you do your studies. And where on the north side of town, on the north side of the county, are you going to get a good road? We talked about elementary, and I'll just say this, I'll circle back to your question, which is, ultimately, yes, but I don't know that we're there. But I don't know that we're there at this point. If you wish to remodel Spring Hill, if you want to leave it at 1,200 and build a new 1,200 on the other side, you're kind of shooting yourself in the foot at that point. Because as we talk about combining facilities and looking at new facilities, we hadn't talked at all about building a small facility. Um, and for a high school, that would be relatively a small facility. If we misread your plan, then I'm, I'm here to say, we'll go whatever direction you want. This is what we felt like was the best option coming off of our Saturday conversation.
And let me go with what I'm coming at you with. Because I think based off of what we gave you, you did exactly what we asked. I've had a lot of conversations since then. Had a lot of new ideas since then. I think what the, there, I think we ought to just go ahead and take off the table buying new property for a school in Spring Hill. I mean, we'd spent enough on properties with the building itself. What I've heard several times is the possible for us to at least consider the refurbishment of Spring Hill High School into what we need. And then phase two, as we look at our growth, not immediately, but in phase. Can we get the screen back up? Uh, Battle Creek High School. They may be close together, but they're going to serve two drastically different areas. I think that's going to be an easier sell, especially as we look at what we want to ask for this year.
And I can do that. And that's y'all's decision. I would, my only say to this would be, to up Spring Hill High School 600 students at a cost of $45 million versus building 2,000 seats for roughly 65 to 70, economically, in the long run, really struggles to be the good sale. I'm not arguing. I'm just saying as we've looked through this, if you want to do a per-seat cost like we just talked about per-teacher cost, that's the exact opposite of what the conversation has been tonight.
Mr. Lindsay, go ahead.
I'm going to throw a wrinkle. I've gone back and forth. And I'm not sure that Battle Creek property, and I think I might have been the one that, um, she was referring to earlier that first day. Just because we own a property or a property's free doesn't mean it's always the best property. I'm not convinced yet that Battle Creek is the best property. And here's a wrinkle I'm going to throw. I'm not sure we're not better off to sell the remaining property we have at Battle Creek to a developer. Now that we have two schools sitting there, we have, we own a prime piece of real estate. I don't know what, uh, Kedron Road and what's the other little road that goes through the neighborhood? Goes to the elementary school? No, the-
Oh, Hummingbird.
Hummingbird and then Malamore. I don't know what those three roads look like if we build a school and we have 1,200 drivers in there one day. I also don't know what 31 looks like when we stick 2,000 students at Spring Hill High School either. So, uh, you know, and I get that the cost, but let's be realistic about the cost. We were, I'm trying to be politically correct when I say this, but, um, we have different leadership now. And that cost doesn't have to be at $43 million. Uh, we, I think that I have confidence in you and I think you have confidence in yourself that you can get that number down properly drastically. So I don't, I've said a bunch to say nothing. But, uh, I'm not sure that I'm so, just because we have, we own the Battle Creek property, I'm not sure that's the best place for us to build a school.
I'll take a moment of levity here and I will say you've said the most correct thing tonight. I do have confidence. And I don't know anyone in this room that doesn't think that. We can do this better than we did. We know that. And I've said that to you over and over. The biggest thing, and I'm good with, look, I really am. I'll argue how I feel all day, but ultimately you guys drive this vessel that we're on. One of my fears at Spring Hill High School is we are landlocked at Spring Hill High School. Even where the band practice is at Spring Hill High School belongs to General Motors and they won't give it to us. We do not own any drive in and out. The student parking lot drive is on General Motors' property. The drive-by, the fire station is on Murray County property. Uh, part of Old 31 is City of Columbia property. The back exit is on General Motors. We have a horrible dismissal. Uh, if you have been up there at times, we dismiss at the same time General Motors is when we talked to them about changing their shift change. They said, "Well, just change the time you start school. We're more into this than you are." There's not a lot of room to do things. I have voiced, and this is on record and I'll say this, I have voiced to several of you that the architectural firm, and I'm probably going to catch some grief on my side for this, that we did Battle Creek's with, it's not necessarily the most friendly to deal with economically. Um, all of the renovation studies that have been done by Spring Hill High School, however though, have been done by that architectural firm. To go in and start over, I'm going to re-spend money. Uh, and I know that's been a point of contention on spending planning money. And we're going to have to re-spend planning money to get someone in there that would be able to lower that number. Now, could we lower that number within the cost savings of the project? Probably. But on the front end, it would take, you know, spending money on something we've already spent money on. Uh, I have a beautiful set of plans for a McDowell Elementary School sitting on a shelf in my room. It ain't ever going to be built. Because the only place it could ever be built is not where we're going to build a school. I do have, uh, just kind of as a citizen, have an issue with re-spending that money. Uh, but I can do that and I think we can come up with a better plan. I do think this. The biggest issue with an expansion of Spring Hill High School is, are the hallways and the internal workings of that building. If you have been at Spring Hill High School during class change, lower A Hall, lower B Hall, where the guidance office is on the front, it can't handle internally 1,800 kids. We can plan it. We can stick them in there. But it's going to be a hot mess when they're in there. And we're going to have people saying, "I can't get down the hall. I don't feel safe." I don't, I mean, we're going to have that. It's just a part of it. But we can do it. Um, and whatever you guys want to do. I'm not, I'm not bent on a new building and building a new building. But I know that when we looked at that five-year plan and all the things that you wanted to do, and I know the conversation came up to maybe eliminating two elementary schools, but it morphed in that same conversation to if you don't, but you repurpose them, then suddenly we moved that fifth grade in Columbia back and now you've got five of your six off of that list. And if you remember what I said to you was, our ask would be this. And it's not, this is Eric's ask. This isn't your ask. But we go to the commission and we say, "We are asking for this amount of money." And in that money, we're going to do one, two, three, push to four as far as we can, take it as far as we can. And our planning money is in there too. We're not going to ask you for a million dollars to draw plans to come back that aren't never going to be built. We're going to do it all within there. They may have a fundamental issue with that. You may have a fundamental issue with that. But as a taxpayer, I don't want to spend money on another set of plans that are going to sit in my office. And that was the plan. And what we brought back was very simply that we were trying to accomplish that five-year list. And this is the last thing, and I'll say this and I promise I'll stop for a while. No matter what anyone in this county wants to say, the growth in this county's north of Bear Creek. There's growth in Columbia. It pales in comparison to what I drove through off of Port Royal today. On the backside of the golf course, they're building more houses in one neighborhood than the city of Columbia has permits pulled for. And they're living in them right now as they build them. I know no one on the south side wants to hear that. And I know everybody says, "They keep getting, they keep getting." The plan we brought you was a City of Columbia school, a City of Spring Hill school, because Spring Hill High School does sit in Columbia if I didn't say that. A county school with a gym at Santa Fe. And if you chose Mount Pleasant Elementary School, that's all four formal municipalities in this county. And I'm not, you take it or go. But I took those six items on that list and I tried my best to get them. And if we want to go a different way because, look, we don't build roads. We don't build roads. Malamore, Hummingbird, that's not our road. Greens Mill, not our road. We talked about initially a new elementary school out Carter's Creek. Carter's Creek, horrible. Much worse than Kedron. At some point, we're going to build a road on, a school on a bad road. You know? Calioka's not on the great road. Hampshire's not on the great road. So I get that pushback, but we don't build roads. That's City of Spring Hill's problem. They picked this land. They helped pick it, remember? That's their problem. That's not our problem.
Let me just ask one procedural question. I like to sell that we're asking for one pot of money to include the planning costs. I think that's a huge positive. We can do that with the high school. But why could we not do that with the renovation plans for Spring Hill High School? We could.
We could. We could. And I said, maybe we could do it out of the savings. I can't widen lower A and lower B Hall. I can build a new cafeteria. We can build a new auditorium. We can build a new whatever. We can't widen those hallways in that building. And if you put 600 more people our size in that building, it's a problem. Remember, Spring Hill High School was built as a sixth through 12th school. Sixth graders are 12 years old. And it was calculated in 1993 for sixth through 12th. By the way, 1,200 sixth through 12th graders. But if you take that by grade, you've got a lot of middle school kids that aren't fully grown. We can do it. But I'll tell you this.
I was just asking about the planning part of it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, no, no, no. No, no, I'm good. We can do that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Moore.
Like I said, no confidence, right?
All right. I am more than happy if this board needs to go back and revisit that thing. But I think it's important that we pick something and stick with it. If we're going to ask for this, we need to ask for it. And God help us if we decide to change our minds after we get it approved. That's just what I don't want. So if we have board members that do not like the direction this is going and that's fine, then maybe we just sit down and have some special called work sessions where we hammer it out and we agree on something. If that's what we do. Well, it sounds like that's a much larger discussion. The thing I keep going back to on this, and I've said it too. I agree with you, having had two children go through Spring Hill High School. I just fail to see how the core of that building can ever really hold the number of kids we're talking about. And the other piece that we forget there, regardless of what we do on those, if we don't do, if we don't repurpose that school as an elementary school, we then, we need to find property somewhere between Columbia and Spring Hill for an elementary school. So we've got to find property, which again is going to be difficult and expensive and time-consuming. Uh, and that's a variable cost that is going to be, I mean, I don't even know where that's, where that number starts. I don't know. Have you guys talked about what that even looks like? What we'd have to allocate for that? So I thought we had, for the most part, agreed on going this direction. Now, if we want to talk about the numbers, I mean, I could see that. I know I still have some concerns with the, um, understanding that Hewlett Spencer has to give us some pretty large numbers. We've been through this before. They can't give us refined numbers. And if I'm bidding a project, I'm going to bid high too until I can, you know, sharpen the pencil and get things down. I get that. And if we, as a board, want to sharpen that for them a little bit, I don't see that that's a problem. But I guess I'm not understanding after multiple discussions that I thought we were moving in the same direction that we had talked about here to be changing gears on that. It just, it concerns me because I don't think it's fair to staff again. Now we're doing, we're going back and redoing something. So if the board needs to revisit the entire capital five-year outlay, what the plans we were looking at doing, then I guess we need to pause budgeting and do that.
No, and I want to clarify. My comments were more or less walking in with 97 and a half million dollars to the county commission and they look and once they stop laughing, then what are we going to ask for? I mean, I want to have a backup plan. I guess what I'm looking for, yes, this is what our needs are. Yes, we've already talked about that. But we can walk out of that room with nothing too. So we have to be able to say, well, I mean, where we go? Ms. Irvin.
Yeah, I just want to say, I don't feel like I'm backtracking at all because we had that Saturday session and our needs were a high school. Didn't say Battle Creek High School. It said a high school. Then it said a elementary school. Then it said Santa Fe Gym and so on. So when I read that we're closing Spring Hill High, not that we're doing that, make sure that's in, but that's the potential. Closing Spring Hill High School and moving it to Battle Creek High School, that was not what I heard. What I remember hearing from the Saturday work session was even maybe, hey, I even heard someone say, "Hey, we can even build a three-story addition on the Spring Hill High School and that could save us money." I mean, I didn't dream that. I'm pretty sure that wasn't in my crazy head somewhere. I'm sure I heard that. But here's my thought. I'm looking at, we're asking for 85 million. And this is what, and I know, I don't, I haven't been here the whole time and I don't get it. But I think we should kind of like bullet off ideas. Because I think if we go to the commission and we say, "This is the direction we're moving. We're looking at getting this many seats in Spring Hill for high school, this many for elementary and a gym." But I think we can tell them honestly, "Hey, we need 4 million for a gym at Santa Fe. Hey, we need 10 to 15 million to renovate Spring Hill for whatever purpose we seek, whether it be elementary or whether it be to keep that as a Spring Hill High School." But like I said, if we use, because the way I've understood it is cost from a high school come when you look at all the facilities that go into the sports. That's a huge cost. And I'm looking at Battle Creek as already a campus school. I just don't understand why we can't put a 1,200-seat Battle Creek. Then you've got, first of all, how many does Spring Hill High hold now? Is it 1,100?
Twelve.
Okay. So then you're potentially getting 2,400 seats for that north end of the county for high school. I mean, am I missing something?
The, what I would say to the athletic facilities at Battle Creek, the football field has been built to convert, um, to add a track, to expand the seating. The baseball field at Spring Hill Middle, or at Battle Creek Middle School cannot be a high school field. It's not large enough. Uh, if it does, we'll have multiple players setting new home run records every year. And when you get into that world, it just can't work. If you wish to move that direction, we can do that. Um, I will say, if you choose to stay at Spring Hill High School, you're still going to incur athletic costs because that stadium has to be replaced. The biggest issue we had with water over the weekend is going into the first base side of the softball field at Spring Hill High School and out the third base side at Spring Hill High School.
That's happening at every school. My kids can't play right now.
Not like it happens at Spring Hill High School. I promise you. Not like it happens at Spring Hill High School. Because all of the floodwater from the roof empties onto the softball field. Great design. But you still incur the athletic cost outside of the baseball field. The baseball field at Spring Hill wouldn't cost you anything. But the stadium seating at Spring Hill High School has to come down. And as you do that, then that leads to work on the field or anything you're going to do. Because as we've said, and you can direct me if I'm wrong, I would hate to come in and just put up new bleachers and leave the rest of it as an old project. We just talked about the Withthorne Gym. We didn't finish it. Uh, if we're going to do the stadium, let's do the stadium. Uh, but that cost doesn't go away. Uh, it may be lessened to a degree because you don't have to have a baseball field. But it's still there. And if you say $10 million to turn part of Spring Hill High School into an elementary school, we can do that. If you say $10 million high schools, $10 million to renovate Spring Hill High School, you're not adding a seat because we have to address some of the inner working issues first. And that just has to happen. The cafeteria, if we, if we add any seats, has to be expanded. We have to address water and electrical issues. If we expand that, the auditorium has to be expanded. I, I think there's numerous reasons that, that, that cost would get quite expensive. So, I mean, it, it, it's just going to be, and, and the other thing is, and I believe I said to you all along, we need high school seats on the north side of the county. You, you can send kids to Central, but if you send kids to Central, you've got to send Columbia kids to Mount Pleasant. I, I can bust them, you tell me. You know, but if, if people in Columbia don't want to go to school in, in, in a Columbia school, then they sure don't want to go to school in a non-Columbia school in Mount Pleasant. So, at some point, they have to have some seats. And, and if we don't add any seats, we got a problem.
And we're talking about elementary?
No, I'm talking about high school. We have to have high school seats.
So now we need high school for Columbia? Or are you just talking about for Spring Hill?
North side of the county.
Well, and I thought, I mean, that's just what I'm just not getting. I mean, I'm not saying let's ignore it, I'm saying let's do something, but I guess I just don't understand. But what I do know is that I'm hearing from the community, I mean, I, I understand the financial side, but I also understand the logistics of parents. I understand parents like campus areas where they can easily get their kids through and drop off and pick up. I understand that people look at Spring Hill High School as having all of these high school facilities and it makes zero sense to the community. And that's my job to help articulate, but I need you to help me understand how to articulate that, to just say, oh, we're just going to scrap that and put an elementary and then we're wasting this, 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 and this. It just sounds like we want a grand Battle Creek and I'm not in favor for that. And maybe you can help me understand, but right now, I just want to do what's best for our community at whole. And I look at it from what I see for 85 million, there's a lot of ways to spend 85 million and get the same end result.
Thank you. Mr. Lindsey.
I, I think that, uh, the question has always been, do we build a new high school or do we renovate Spring Hill High School? That's, that's, that's the question that we've never really answered. But, but, but that's, that's, we, we've got to do one of those two options. And, um, and if we build Battle Creek, we wind up with 2,000 seats for 65 million bucks. If we renovate Spring Hill High School, we wind up with 2,000 seats for, huh, we'll build another floor. But, but the bottom line is, we're going to wind up with the same number of seats no matter which we decide to do. Now, um, I push back on you, but I'll come to your defense a little bit. If we, if we decide to stay at Spring Hill High School and the softball field is trash, it needs to be blown up and start again. The football field needs to be blown up and start again. The only thing you're going to save, and that's what you're saying, is your only thing you're going to save is the baseball field. Now, if you go to Battle Creek, um, i- if we decide to go there, it's unfair to every parent that's ever, and you're one of them, that, that's ever spent time raising money to get what they got at Spring Hill High School for a baseball field. So, if we go to a new place, then I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we give them exactly what they have now. Because there's lots of time, lots of money being raised to get to where they are now. But I, I think we also got to remember, looking in all this, in this 85 million dollar number, basically out of 85 million, we're going to get 2,000, we're going to get 800 extra seats, uh, high school seats, and we're going to get an elementary school, however we skin that cat. But the elementary school, even, even if we decide to build Battle Creek, the, and the renovation of Spring Hill High School, if we go that route, we're, it's five or six years down the road before we create any elementary school seats. So, I'm not sure that it's good for us to, and I'm going, to clog up our request right now to the county commission with something that we're not even expecting to need for five or six years down the road. I think that it would be, uh, more palatable for, for the county commission if we came in with a 45 or 50 dollar, 45 or 50 million dollar number rather than a 95 million dollar number. Now, it, in a perfect world, I think we go find a new piece of property, this is just Wayne speaking, but we go find a new piece of property, we build a new high school independent of Battle Creek, but as you said, that, oh, where in the world would we find 60 or 70 vacant acres in, in the Spring Hill area? I mean, that's, uh.
Head towards 431. You leave City of Spring Hill to do that.
Right, so I, like, so I don't think that's feasible. But, but pushing back on David a little bit, I, I, I think we have to answer that question, are we going to renovate Spring Hill High School or are we going to ask to build a new, a new high school somewhere? Because ultimately, we get the same thing at the end. We wind up with 2,000 high school seats. And, um, and, and I'm, I'm, I, I get what, I, I see the, the cons of staying at Spring Hill High School, but I think there's still some cons at Battle Creek also. And, and now personally, I, I wouldn't, um, I think it's a long time that you, you didn't, you didn't put a time on it, but, but I think it's a long time down the road. If we add 800 seats in Spring Hill, that buys us a lot of time, high school wise. Buys us 10 or 12 years. But house tops don't equal students, we can prove that time and time again. But, um, but. I just think it's an easier sale. If, if, if I was sitting in the county commission seat and they got to raise taxes to do this, no matter what we ask them to do, um, it's a lot easier to raise taxes to pay for a 45 or 50 million dollar bond than it is for a 95 million dollar bond.
Mr. Howe.
So, if we spend 40 million dollars on a renovated Spring Hill High School, do we get a finished product like Central High School? Is it functional? Will it work for us?
Is it functional or is it finished?
Both, I mean, is it functional and will it work? Will it, I mean, because if we're spending the money, whether it's 40 million dollars or 60 million dollars, it, it needs to work. It needs to, I mean, if kids can't get down hallways, why are we putting 40 million dollars in, into a, I mean, why are you funneling kids? If you can't get from point A to point B, what's the purpose of, of having a hallway? So, I mean, if, if we're trying to make it a functional building, then what do we need to spend to make it a functional building?
If, if you expand it, hallway stays the same, no matter what. I mean, we can spend 43 million dollars on, and remember, that was the number we sent last year, was 43 million dollars. So, so if we lower to 40, we're going backwards here. We spend 43 million dollars, the inner workings of that building remain the same. It, it has big issues as far as the cafeteria and where we would have to, to get water. I mean, the water's there, but to expand it and to, to do some of the things that you would have to do to expand a kitchen and the electrical, electricals on the other side of the building, those are things that go into it. It's kind of like the, the Santa Fe project we're doing right this summer for HVAC. A huge cost in that is, is getting our electrical up to date to be able to carry the new units that we're putting down there. So, so it's not just building some classrooms and saying, here you go. Can we do that cheaper than the plan that was there? Yeah, because they were going to build all new vocational classrooms that hold a lower number of kids and, and required more rooms and we can automatically go to, to regular class. I know Ms. Brown didn't like to hear that, but we can go to Janet classrooms, up that number and put more kids up front pretty immediately. But we have to redraw those plans. The, the in and out of the, it's, it's just not a great place. I, and, and I say that from having spent six years as a parent at Spring Hill High School. Can't get in and out, drive a school bus and see what happens. So, so to answer your questions, we can expand it and put kids in there. Is it going to be functional and safe as far as the moving around? And I hate to use the word safe. I mean, but, but it, but it does become an issue at some point when you put too many people in one area and a fire marshal comes in and says your egress isn't right for this. You can't change it, that's the width of your hall and that's the width of your hall. So, then do you have to find other places to put kids or do you have to build other outlets? It, it's kind of like any, we can do it. We can put them in there. My fear, and I said to you when we first started this discussion on Saturday morning, and I hope as I speak to you, you, I hope if I say anything different than I said on that Saturday morning, you're telling me when I say it, because I think I've been pretty consistent in this. We can put kids up there, we can expand that school, and by the time we get it finished, my fear is going to be exactly what happened at Marvin Wright. We build an addition and before we move in, we're making plans to build a new high school. And that's what happened at Marvin Wright. Before we set school, step, before we walked into a classroom, we're building Battle Creek. And, and, and I say that, and, and look, I'm not, again, I'll, I drive, you're driving the ship, I get it. You know, if I step out of this role and the taxpayer, so what? They get sticker shock on the front end. If it's going to cost me less over the next 10 years, they just have to suck it up and notice what a new car costs. I mean, that's the truth of it. We gave them, we gave them 97 million dollars last year, they gave us a million dollars. I don't expect 97 million dollars. That's what they gave. We, we, we sent 97 million dollars last year and they gave us a million dollars. And I know Ms. Stevenson's not going to like this, but so what? Let them be shocked. That, that's the truth of it. And down the road, everybody that pays taxes in this bill, in this room says that 10 years from now, I'd like to have spent less money in 10 years than I do now or, or I do by piecemealing it together. You tell me what to do, but we're going to have to rework some things and we're going to have to pull back. And if you give me a 45 million dollar number just to make them happy and they don't give us 45 million dollars, oh, well, here's a million dollars for buses.
And how big of an elementary school would fit in that, in that property at high school?
Up to 1,000. We can do 1,000.
So, 850 to 1,000? And how much is that, 10, that 10 million?
We think 10 million. And again.
So, we're building a, an elementary school that would house 1,000 students for 10 million dollars?
With general numbers on the front end, yes, that, that's what our anticipation is.
Okay, so I just want to get that, you know, so I mean, so we're building two schools. We're building a very large school with a large capacity that we could then rearrange schools and possibly get our fifth grade out of middle school and back into elementary school where I believe this entire board has said we want to do. So, is that possible as well with this plan?
Everywhere but Mount Pleasant, yes.
Okay, so we're everywhere but Mount Pleasant. So, we're getting progress here. So, we're, not only are we checking off another thing, that, that this is something that we as a board have talked about, is moving kids back into elementary school, fifth graders back into elementary school. So, this is possible?
Possible, yes.
Okay, okay. So, I'm not done with you. It's a big number and I agree with you 100%. And I feel that if we didn't ask for what we need, we wouldn't be doing our jobs. I understand, last year we did ask for a lot of money. The previous year we asked for a lot of money and have we gotten it? No, is that their fault? No, I don't, it's just what it is. But if we just say, oh, no, we don't need this high school, we, we don't need this elementary school, we're going to ask for 10 buses, we'll get five. We're going to ask for, you know, 4 million dollars in, or 10 million dollars in, in bond money to fix up, to maintain our schools, we might get four. That's just the way, that's just the reality of it. But if we don't let them know what we need, how do they know what we need? And that's just, that's where I'm going to leave it.
And I need, I need to correct myself on something. We got 600,000 dollars this year. We bought six buses, we asked for 12 and got six. So, we gave them a 97 million dollar, I know it's COVID year. We gave them 97 million dollars and we got 600,000.
All right, here's, here's what I'm going to piggyback off of, uh, Mr. Howe. We can make this presentation of 97.5 million dollars and I think that that's not out of line. But I do think that we need to have some good conversations on the front end to say, how can we work together to finance this? I will say that I have had some of those conversations already. Can't say that I've been very productive on those conversations, but those are the conversations we have. If we just walk in and say, hey, you guys got the money, give us 15, uh, 97 million dollars, that's not going to work at all. But if we go in and say, this is how we might be able to do that. And if we can clearly articulate what we've thought through and why there's a need, I don't think there's anybody going to be surprised that there's a need for seats in, in the northern part of the county. But I do think we need to have more than just an ask. We need to have a plan of how can we work together to make it happen? Mr. Howe.
I, I want to piggyback off of you. Um, the only caveat to that is, is I believe we did present a plan two years ago to do that and that, and that came with a sales tax increase that, that didn't come to fruition either. So, I, I don't know what we can do. We're not a taxing authority, we have no way to raise any kind of money whatsoever. We can just present ideas. We presented an idea and it looks like we're still spinning our tires trying to come up with more ways to finance stuff that we can't, we, we don't have the taxing authority. So, I don't know what we can do, but I would, I'm open to any ideas of anything we can do to figure out how.
It just takes teamwork.
Mr. Moore.
I guess I'm going to go back to, I'm, I'm still confused with, we of a board have changed direction of what we had talked about. Because again, I was under the assumption this was the direction we were going. I'm hearing from some other people. Oh, we're back, I guess I missed that part too. I mean, because that, to me, that's all that really matters. Again, the funding will have to happen or it won't happen, that, that's their choice. I'm more concerned that we, we were working on creating a five-year facilities plan. This is aligned with that. If we want to try to tweak the numbers, I could get that, but I still want to, I was getting nervous when you were mentioning, Mr. Chairman, about having a contingency plan and some other things. I just want to stick with whatever we as a board decide and, and keep moving that direction. Now, if we decide we want to do something different, uh, Mr. Lindsey had some ideas that I don't think are outside of the scope of that, about looking at different properties, that's fine. But I would rather us board, this board get back together, talk about that, roll that into our five-year facilities plan so that our staff has a very clear idea of where we're going. I would prefer not to do that simply because I think we've already kind of done a lot of work and I, I hate that we would throw them another curveball at this point. I still say, I'm okay with the concepts that we have aligned here. I wouldn't have a problem looking at a slightly lower number personally. I think that the number for the two projects are a little high and I would be comfortable going lower by at least 5 million dollars on that. And I still think it can be done and done well within those numbers. And I don't mean that to say we're just going to do the first two projects and cut out the other ones. I think we can make it all fit in that number. But that's just my, my take on it, I would be interested in other people's.
Ms. Irvin.
I was going to give, I think he was wanting to speak. You can go ahead and then I'll take it next.
Uh, no.
Like I said, it just caught me off guard. I agree, we need, we need seats at a high school. I don't agree with where, but, because we didn't discuss where. We discussed seats at a high school on the north side of town. We discussed we needed elementary, we need to discuss we needed a gymnasium. So, all I know from what I've heard is that we usually don't get the money that we request. So, I think whatever we do get, hopefully we get it all and we can just, you know, get happy building. But if we don't, I don't want it to have to be like stalled because here's my thing, and I know it's third request, but 4 million is a lot easier to come by than 65 million. And if we can give us 4 million to go ahead and get started on, say, the gym at Santa Fe, and then when we can get it, I mean, whatever they're willing to do, but I think we should have them dotted out to where hopefully we can get some. And then let's say they can come up with 50 million, but they can't come up with the other higher number, then we need to have a backup plan of what we can do to get moving because like you say, time is of the essence. And maybe, and I'm sorry if I don't understand completely, but I'm just wanting to get us seats and accomplish these goals and satisfy the community's needs too.
Ms. Parker.
I was just going to say, I, I don't know that I necessarily have a preference on where it is. I know that there's, reasonable minds can disagree on this. But what does concern me a little bit is, um, I do think that in some ways we do have to plan for contingency. I mean, I'm just thinking about Central High School and it took 10 years to get Central High School built. And I don't think Spring Hill can wait 10 years to get a new Spring Hill or Battle Creek High School built. And so, this board is going to have to deal with that if it happens. I'm saying if the funding doesn't happen. I do kind of like what Ms. Irvin was saying as far as, um, more of a bulletproof, I mean, bullet point for, um, the two projects. But I mean, I think the gym at Santa Fe, maybe you can go on there, but I think, you know, the high school has to be first because I really don't, I agree with Mr. really don't, I agree with Mr. Lindsay, I don't think the elementary school is an immediate need right now. Um, a- and so maybe that can help us get this number down. But I mean, I've been on this board for six, almost seven years. We ain't gotten anywhere near ninety-seven million dollars anytime we've asked a commission for money, and it's been a lot closer to like fifty, sixty when we've asked. Um, and that was usually when commissions were like maybe early on in their tenure, not like a year away from having to go through reelection. Um, so that's really just kinda my concern as far as just the timing of all this, and I agree, we have to ask for what we need, but we've done that in years past and not gotten anything, so I don't think we can do that for ten years and just be kind of oblivious to what they're dealing with. I mean, they do have to deal with the taxing side of it, and we don't.
Mr. Lindsay?
My, my first concern is that we're asking, or, or potentially asking, uh, we haven't asked for anything, even though newspapers said we have, but, uh, but we're potentially asking for money to renovate an elementary school, and like I said earlier, that could be five or six years down the road. So, uh, I think that we should back that number out. Um, as Mr. Moore said, I think that we could, um, I think we could reduce that number some. Uh, a- and, I'm, I have the feeling that we should get an educated number, and, and then a number that we all can, or at least six of us can agree on, and then we charge architects or whomever to design to that number. Now, obviously, we can't tell them to build a two-thousand-student high school for fifteen million dollars, I get that, but, but if we come up with some reasonable number, if it's a sixty-million-dollar number, then I say, we, we, then we charge our architects, we, we charge our design team that, you know, come up with us a high school for sixty million bucks, or, or, 'cause it doesn't matter what we come up with, if we can't get the funding to do it, we're just sitting here spinning our wheels. So, so we, we have to, um, get to a, a reasonable number. But, uh, Doug, I know bond rates are really low right now, um, so I'm sure that plays into this, but also looking, and, and I'm getting outside of my bounds when I say this, but, but looking forward, is, does the county have some debt that's about to roll out, or in the near future that's about to roll off? And where I'm going with this is, if, 'cause it's gonna, whatever we do takes a tax increase. It, it doesn't matter, it, it doesn't matter if we ask for four million dollars or we ask for ninety-seven million, it's gonna take a tax increase. But, um, but if, but if we got a tax increase, if, if we asked, you know, let, let's say, and I'm just throwing hypothetical numbers, they don't mean a thing, but, but it, but if we went with a sixty-five million dollar ask, and the county commission decided that, that they're willing to raise taxes for that, to, to pay that bond, and then six years down the road, we're ready to build an elementary school somewhere, do whatever, is there any debt gonna roll off the books in the next five or six years that maybe they could repurpose that money, uh, to take care of, of another project?
We have some coming off in twenty-twenty-eight. That's six years, uh, seven years right now. Do you have any earlier? We just had one, uh, roll off, uh, this year, um, and is that, is that the HVAC project? Which one was that? Yeah. Oh, the, and it was a refunding done on the twenty-twelve borrowing, uh, that just got paid off, so that was, think of it as a home refinance, uh, so, so that's what fell off. Um, but, uh, yeah, we don't have anything within the next six years, uh, that's gonna fall off, but the numbers you were talking about, if, if you have a, a sixty, let me see, a sixty-five million dollar borrowing, that would be a property tax increase of eighteen cents, uh, to fund the debt service fund to, to cover the cost. Um, a- and if you wanted to do something higher, uh, really, rates really are at, at a low rate now. Uh, we got a ridiculous rate undoing the HVAC repairs, you know, borrowing that three million, we got point three-seven interest rate, uh, in comparison to, the state wouldn't even give us money for that cheap. The state gave us money at a half a percent. So it, it really is the time to borrow, but it, we're going, I, I expect those rates to steadily climb up at this point in time. Uh, if anybody ever wants to do, uh, quick math on how much money, recurring revenue you would need to pay for debt, just take however many millions you're going to borrow. For example, if you're gonna borrow a hundred million, just type in a hundred, and then you're gonna multiply that by seventy thousand, because that's, for every million, you're looking at about seventy thousand in revenue you have to generate to pay for that, depending on the interest rate. So that can go down as low as sixty thousand per million, if you're in a really good interest rate environment. And so you need seven million dollars, uh, in recurring revenue, and you can divide that by your current penny rate, which I'm estimating two-hundred-and-fifty thousand for this year, a good round, flat number, and that's twenty-eight cents.
Just, um, for, I'm sorry to cut you off. No, I'm, you're done. Next year, if I understand right, is a reassessment year?
That's correct. Reappraisal year.
Okay. Just wanted to toss that one out there. So what do we, uh, what do we, uh, where do we go with this? I mean, I think, what I'm hearing anyway, is that it may not be a, a perfect ask, but it's an ask of what we need. And that, uh, would be the ninety, the ninety-seven-five number, but we could back out some of those projects that we know won't happen on the front end.
Correct. I, I do know too, and I'm gonna say this, and I, and I hesitate to say this, um, many of the systems across the state are addressing the second part of this, uh, capital needs list, these HVAC units through Esser Money. Um, you may not want to. It sounds like that's kind of the, the honeypot everybody's going after tonight. Don't mean to throw a wrench into it, um, but that's there. I- if you choose not to, and remember, we talked about on that Sunday, that first part of that second part is the, the ask for just maintenance. We can do, uh, one, if not two of those out of that, and it just lowers the, the maintenance ask for this, this coming year. Um, tha- that is there. It, beyond that first number, which I know is, is the sticker shock number, uh, everything on here, the, the buses have to be replaced. We have that bus rotation going. We're asking for twelve, remember, and I've, I've mentioned this several times, we've talked to numerous commissioners. We have a bubble year in twenty-three where over twenty buses come off the line, and we have tried to buy ahead, uh, per several of them asking us to do that, so that that twenty number falls down. This takes into account, um, the purchase of twelve buses, nine are falling off, so that's, that's buying three ahead right there. Um, but in twenty-three, there, there's a, there's a two-million-dollar line item for buses coming, i- if we don't buy ahead. We had talked internally, uh, about the, the athletic line at the bottom, the six-hundred-and-sixty thousand. I know that within the budget in the one-forty-one, there's a, about a three-twenty-seven ask, maybe three-fifty-seven's the number, I'm not sure, that, that addresses minimum standards, uh, something that the board passed. Uh, this was just to look at large projects. Um, those, those need attention, they need atten-, this does not address the stadium, by the way. This is large projects across the, the, uh, the system. We can add or remove anything you want us to in there. We can be, um, a- as nimble with it as you want to be. Uh, if you want a backup plan for a high school, then, then we're gonna renovate Spring Hill High School, and that cost is gonna be around forty-five million dollars. Um, a- and there's, there's not another option up there. We looked at Spring Hill Middle. I know I'm just throwing headlines all over the place tonight. We looked at turning it into a, to a high school, and there's no parking. Can't do it. Um, this, we, we've explored from that first Saturday that we first talked about this, a- and I've talked to numerous members that are, that I'm looking at right now about options, and we've beat our head, we've tried to be outside the box. And again, I will say, and this is the last thing I'll say, that eighty-five million dollars is a bullet point. It's a high school with all the design fees, it's an elementary renovation with all the design fees, it is a gym with all the design fees, and then we're gonna push as far forward with that. If it's Mount Pleasant Elementary, if there's money left, we'll go to Joseph Brown. W- we're, we're saying, we're not gonna ask for money for, for plans to sit on a shelf. If you wanna buy the, back the, uh, the elementary school out, then we can do that. That just means we've kinda committed them to giving us some money to do something with Spring Hill High School in some form down the road, um, and, and I think they're smart enough to know that. Um, but that was our commitment to you, is that we can take, and, and if, if you build a high, uh, elementary school large enough that we can, we can work towards getting that fifth grade moved in Columbia, th- then that's five of our six five-year items, a- and I would say that if I told you we had six five-year building items, and we could do them for eighty-five million dollars, I, I think most people would say, we're all in, don't even talk about what they are. Um, a- and I know, again, that a lot of money's being spent up north. Up north's making us a lot of money right now too. I hate to say that.
Okay. Let me, let me jump in here and tell you what I think I want, want to see. This is, this is what we need, right here, what we're looking at. But we also have to look at what we can and can't borrow at a given time. So if we have a number, this is the number I would like to take to the county commission and say, this is what we need, this is why, and this is how. But I also would like to see for myself the numbers on taking out the elementary school remodeling. You said that some of these HVAC units could be taken care of with other, uh, out of a li- another line item? Did I understand that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Without going into that one, I thought I heard maybe that there could be other, other maintenance maybe?
A- and you do know, we've talked, and, and we talked with the budget committee about, and, and it's just been talked, and I know that, about, um, they would rather maybe find a reoccurring yearly number for maintenance, rather than going in and borrowing the large bonds like they did.
And that's your four-million-dollar number?
Yeah. That's the four-million-dollar number.
Okay. Can some of these other four that are on the list roll into that four million dollars?
Probably the first two.
Okay.
And then that leaves us, that leaves us the remainder to work on items.
Okay. Then let's, that's the other number I wanna see there. And then if you think we can pare down athletic, I, I mean, that's really, that's pennies compared to everything else, so I'm not too worried about that. But at least a rough number on that is what I'd like to see in comparison to what we're already asking, as our need. Uh, you don't have to do that right now, but just shoot in an email sometime.
A- and we can do that. That, let's, let's say that eighty-five million, um, we can break that out into estimated costs, a- and, you know, please note, we're, we're working with numbers that we have to be safe with on the front end.
These are very rough estimates.
They're very rough estimates.
I don't think there's, there's any doubt about that.
Yeah. A- and we will dial those in specifically. I, I, I do hesitate, I, I will say this. We bid a McDowell facility after we, we drew it up, and we, we knew exactly what it was gonna cost, and then that got shelved, and then it came back up again, a- and the district elected not to rebid that, because we had vendors that said, we put a lot of time into this, we put a lot of work into this, you didn't build it, we'll give you a rough estimate as to what this cost went up. A- and, and I'm, part of our discussion was trying to avoid that. Whatever number we ask for, we're committing to them, to the commission. We're gonna design it, and we're gonna build it, and anything that's left over, we're pushing to the next item, so that we don't have a million-dollar notebook laying on a desk in my office. And, and I say that just to, to remind you that, 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 our proposal was a bullet point proposal. It wasn't, we're spending eighty-five mil-, and, and please remember, we can design a six, sixty-million-dollar high school, still gotta put furniture in it. There, there are lots of costs that have to go with that initial opening. If you remember when we opened Battle Creek, there was like a two-point-seven, five-million-dollar first-year bump that just went to open it, and that was beyond, we already had the furniture in it and everything. So, I, I know that what we're saying to you is, a- you know, a- and I know if Mr. Howe was here, he, he, he would agree, he'd grimace a little bit, but he would agree, is that we're committing to you that we're gonna push that, that dollar as far as it goes, and if we say it costs sixty million dollars to move in that high school, uh, and it costs whatever for the athletic facilities, our goal is to, to, to come under that, so that we can take those dollars somewhere else. Uh, but whatever dollar amount you give us to ask for, uh, when I stand in front of the commission on your behalf, and I'm assuming that my big mouth would be the one selling something, that would be my sell to them, is that you're not gonna give us a penny that we don't spend for Spring Hill or for Murray County Schools in that order, and, and we're gonna push it as far as we can.
Okay. And I'm gonna just say, I think I might've done the math on what I was asking you to do some math on, and I came up to roughly seventy million dollars, bringing that ninety-seven down to seventy. We got two more lights, and I don't wanna spend much more time on this, 'cause I don't think we're gonna go anywhere with it tonight. But, uh, Mr. Moore?
I, I was just gonna say, uh, two things. One, on that, um, seventy seems awful low, 'cause I think the number I heard for the renovation was ten million, and if you just back out another three-point-four million on the HVAC projects, that, that's all you're able to cut out of that. So I'm not, not sure how that gets to seventy million.
I'll do the math for you.
Okay. Um-
I like your mind.
The concern that I had with, with what Mr. Lindsay said, and, and I'm not saying it's, it's the wrong approach, the concern I have is, one of the biggest selling points is exactly what I think you said, was that we have a five-year facilities plan, this knocks out the vast majority of, of those projects. Um, and if we start cutting too far into, to try to get the big one, right, I'm worried that that eats up all of the dollars and it doesn't get any further. Uh, and that, I don't think that's fair either. I think that's, um, 'cause I'm very concerned, I know we talked about changing gears and doing the Spring Hill High School where it is now, that forty-three-million-dollar number did not renovate other parts of the school. It only, it only rebuilt certain new parts, but there were still plenty of other parts of the school that were not touched. And when I say not touched, that means they didn't even get new ceiling tiles, they didn't get new plumbing. You literally would have old parts of the school right attached to this brand-new shiny piece. Uh, it also did not touch the sports fields at all, uh, which was a whole nother issue. It doesn't address parking and a, and a whole lot of other things that I, I think would probably need to be rolled in there. So, I think it's probably unrealistic to look at that forty-three million as if it's, um, even if it was a little extravagant and we could change some things, I still think there's some other costs that would push it up considerably. Um, but it, back to Mr. Lindsay, I, I, I don't disagree with us squeezing the number a little bit, that's just my concern, is that if we squeeze it too much to have a, a contingency plan, is that we end up squeezing it to the point where we get one thing out of this, and that, to me, is a disservice to what the whole point of this was, was to try to get pretty much the entire five-year, uh, you know, we can, what I liked about it was we would say, hey, we pretty much are not gonna have to come back to you for five years. I mean, that's kind of a pretty big thing. Any other option says, well, we're coming right back to you. Uh, that, that's the, the trouble I have with, with knocking it down a little bit.
Mr. Lindsay, your light's the last one.
I just wanna touch on something Mr. Palmer said, and then you alluded to it, to Chairman Fulbright, but, um, we haven't even talked about Esser three-point-o monies yet, and we're talking about fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen million dollars. I don't, I don't know what that is, eighteen million, what, whatever it is. Um, but it, my idea behind that is, that's taxpayer money. I mean, it, it's federal money, but it's taxpayer money, and if we can use that money to prevent us from having to pay interest with taxpayers' money, I think we should. Um, anything, you know, w- w- we beat up Esser two-point-o and, and Esser one got, and then I think Friday, it might even hit it at Esser four. I mean, h- there's no end to this, but, um, but, but I think that we, we should, you know, we're, we're at a point now that, um, we should start taking care of some of these needs and re- remove some of these asks, and it also relieves a burden of, of paying interest on that money. So, um, I, I just wanted to hit on that. I know that some people may be fundamentally against that, but I'm not. I think that, uh, anything that we can take care of, any one-time purchase we can take care of with Esser money, we'll try to do it.
Okay. So I guess we stand at the point now where we, you've got a little work on some refining of numbers and seeing maybe if we could spend some of that money in, in some of these areas? And then that could help guide what we proceed with our ask.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, no, there is no other discussion on this. Uh, two-point-three, employee comparative overview.
That's just a FYI item, Mr. Chairman. That's just an FYI item, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Pretty much the rest of them are.
Okay. Could you just, and I'm just looking at headlines or titles here. Additional payroll cost increase analysis. Just tell me briefly what I need to know about that.
Uh, it shows how we're underbudgeted for this year and what goes into the difference and why we have to budget what we budget if we do move forward with the vacancies and new positions that are in.
Thank you. And the last one, I believe, was the information I may have requested while we were talking about this, was it not?
Uh, no. I wish I could be that fast. Uh, that is actually... Well, it was requested in advance of the meeting by Ms. Kinzer and she'll talk about it.
All right. Yeah, Ms. Kinzer?
It was a request I made because I, I just wanted to be able to look at the salaries at, uh, central office and principals because we've, we've got this thing on the table about, uh, changing the way we pay our staff and all. You know, I, I think we probably need to look at that a little bit further. I'm, I'm not in agreement with that. And especially looking at the, uh, chart that, the organizational chart and how that would change, uh, give some substantial raises as well. And I don't even know, uh, we haven't seen a cost estimate as to what, if, if everyone went out and then who would be grandfather, who's chosen to be grandfather. I just don't think we're ready to do that. And I would like for the discussion, I think maybe it, it maybe is a work, you know, we need to look at everything at our retreat in September, uh, all of our salaries across the board and have some plan.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Parker?
I agree with Ms. Kinzer. I don't think that we're ready for the adjustment on the administrative salary schedule. And I don't think that's actually included in our budget at this point anyway, is it? So, just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page about that. The other thing in looking at this document, I know that there are certain positions that are 11-month employees. One thing that as we look at costs, are there any positions at central office that could potentially go from 12-month employees to 11-month employees? I mean, if you don't want to get rid of people, if we reduce time spent on it, I just think that that's another option that you could potentially look at.
Okay. Thank you very much. Can we have these numbers and, uh, uh, prepare for a healthy discussion on the 6th? All right. Sounds good.
Mr. Lindsey?
Request for the 6th, can, and, and maybe we're not at this point yet. But could we, uh, notice it in a way where we could start actually taking a vote and knocking some of these out? Because I mean, it seems like if we took it section by section, some, I think some of them, it appears we're ready to... I'm going to say get out of our way, but...
Could you speak to that just a little bit? Kind of because I've tried to compare it to how the county side does it, but I don't want us to say that this is a path we have to follow.
Um, I, I don't know that it's a path you have to follow. Um, but by May 1st, this school board has to send the finance director in the private act to budget, uh, at least to go forward to the commission before June 1st. Uh, that, that's just in, in the private act. Um, however y'all want to do that. Uh, I, I believe the, the next voting meeting we could have that would vote on the budget would be April 13th, if I'm not mistaken. So, you would have a voting meeting right after your work session. Uh, I don't know if that would appease y'all, but...
So, would it, 13th is the regular meeting. Would it be possible then, and I guess this is procedurally, whatever we decide at the 6th, we could say we will push this on to the 13th to vote on it at that time? That way, we don't have to have a bunch of separate... I, I mean, what's the board's wish on that? I mean, we do have a voting meeting the week after the budget meeting. That would maybe take a little pressure off us of the 6th. Yeah. We could put it on the agenda for the 13th.
Well, what, what I was thinking, if we, if we called the 6th a budget committee meeting rather than a work session, we could, it's a non-binding vote. It would be a recommendation from the budget committee that would still have to have approval from the full board, even though the budget committee is made up of the full board. And, and, and what I'm trying to get to, so that we, so that we don't have this question like on, on the Capitol discussion we just had. If we were able to actually hands up, hands down, if I know I'm in the minority, that eight of you want to go one way and I'm, and two of us want to go the other way, I'm, I'm going to quit arguing. I, I, we'll quit wasting our time. I'll, I'll go on. So, that's what, I'm just trying to get some clarity on some things so that we don't... Now, if I think I got a fighting chance, I'm going to fight. But, uh, but when I figure out I'm whooped, I'm done, so...
Doug, you have a preference on that?
I, if you're asking my preference, I would say the budget committee idea is a great idea because it gives us direction on what to bring to you to vote on the 13th.
Okay. Then do we need to do any special publication or anything like that? Can we, I, I don't... I think we have to publicize if we're going to vote on it on the 6th.
It's a non-binding vote, correct?
So, we can do that. Okay. That's fine. I'm, I'm, the most convenient way possible is what I'm going for.
Mr. Hickman?
What, what time are we talking on the 6th? Regular time at 6?
6 o'clock. Yes, sir. All right. Any other, there is no other discussion. We will come back on the 6th, 6 o'clock. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.